Sorry, I wasn't paying attention. Mine says 5:58, that's why. Alright, everybody at the school. Please silence your cell phones, silence your devices. So it's 6:02, I call this meeting on Saginaw City Council order. Please rise for the voters.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, please be seated. Item number two is the invocation. Do we have Reverend Michael Orr anywhere? I don't see him. Do I have anybody else who would volunteer to do the invocation? Anybody just down to give an invocation tonight? Anybody in the audience want to give an invocation? Go. You'll do it. Go for it. Better you than he.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say, God, please make sure we get the right answers tonight. And it makes everybody happy. And may God bless America.
So we're sweet. I like it. Very nice. Item number three is audience participation. So, audience participation, if there's an item that is posted you was to speak about, please see the city secretary in front, one of these forms. I've already got several. You're allowed to speak on any posted item. The item is not posted, we are not allowed to discuss. But if it is posted, you're allowed to speak upon it. I think we have a couple of public hearings? We have public hearings? Yeah. Any public hearings, when I call for public hearing, I will ask for a public comment. You don't need to fill out a form for a public hearing. Yep. Alright, item four is the consent agenda. I've already had a request to pull item D. A is action regarding minutes of August 16th, B is action regarding minutes of August 22nd, C is action regarding Terrence County College Range Control, Range Contract or No. Any questions on A, B, and C? If not, I'll entertain a motion for A, B, and C.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve A, B, and C of the consent agenda as presented.
No second to that. Let the talker present. Keith, are we ready to vote? Alright. Let's vote, folks. Motion passes. Thank y'all. With the record reflected, we do have a full house, a quorum this evening, so thank y'all for coming. Alright, item D, action regarding acceptance of various easements for the tri-con development. For that, Director Public Works, Randy Newsom.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. These three easements were easements that the city requested. Two of them are extensions for the property to the west. It's undeveloped at this time, for future tie-in. The other one is a water line easement to loop the water line for fire protection. The chief may want to kind of chime in on this, but it helps with flow for fire protection in that subdivision.
I would just add, this is normal practice for a property. If a development's going on, if they're building on it, we try to put easements for the next property to make it easier to the benefit of the city and at the recommendation of the city to put those in, is how that came to be.
Counsel, any questions on this item? I do have a request to speak. Carmen Drake, you want to approach?
Good evening. Coming to you today, I understand that the contractor needs an easement for that property, but I would like to ask council to reconsider and hold the contractor actually more responsible, because they have completely neglected the safety of children that are across the street. They have not checked while we had a massive rainstorm on the property. There's a pond behind our backyard that is at least now six or seven foot deep. It rained last night again, I checked on it. It's gotten even worse. There's more rain coming in, the pond is deeper. I have got, I was in touch with Gabe, which I he, because I told him that at least, at the bare minimum, we need a four-foot fence around that pond, because there's kids literally walking by it, there's kids across the street. And I'm trying not to be very passionate about, but I am a little passionate about, because I'm working construction myself, and to me, it's reckless for any kind, I mean, if you want to give them the easement and all that, then excavationists can happen, which tractors will be moving along and everything's going to move on. Before I give that up, beg you people, make the contractor put a six-foot fence on before something bad happens. I've seen it, and it's not fun. So before you consider giving an easement, talk to the contractor, make him aware. He needs to put up a six-foot fence to keep our kids, to keep anybody, a dog, anything, safe. I understand he has work to do, but do it like everybody else does. There's requirements that when you have a pond, a swimming pool even in Saginaw, you've got to have a six-foot fence, right? So what I'm asking is, put a fence around it. And that's my take on that.
Carmen, so, I'd also heard that there was, that they're not keeping the place very clean, and that the fence they had, that there's dirt and stuff coming over onto
Yes, what is happening, because there's been so much rain and nobody's actually coming by to check on it. There is mud flowing into the streets and the site, I mean, because I walked through my neighborhood, there's mud coming out, and there is a fire hydrant that's covered in mud, which is, if there's a fire, oh my goodness, you know, fire department doesn't have time to take out a shovel and look for the fire hydrant, mud out. So that's also a safety concern, again, the fire hydrant. So, and to me, I just, I don't understand, I mean, come on, it's not that hard to put a six-foot fence, especially now that you know you have a pond, and that pond is, the water is not going where. And now that I'm thinking about it, the water is not going anywhere, it is stagnant. It is still hot out there, people. It's still mosquito time, and you're creating a health hazard, because you're allowing them mosquitoes to breed in that pond. So, that's on top of that, it's a health hazard.
Did they stop working on it because of the weather?
No, they have stopped to work, they haven't been working on it because they don't have any approved civil plans yet, the final approval for the civil plans, is what they're waiting on. There are a couple of issues that are being addressed, I think that that was resolved.
I have a question to ask. How hard would it be to get a pump, a water pump, and suck that dry?
We talked to the contractor this morning, an inspector did, I think, Jeff Clement?
Yes.
There he is, right there. You want to, you want to address this?
I can.
Okay, he's with the JBI, so he can.
Good afternoon, my name is Jeff Clement with JBI Partners, we're the engineer for the project. So, yes, to what Carmen was saying, we did get a great amount of rain, and the pond is supposed to dry, drain. We have a check dam in place that keeps, you know, sediment from leaving the site and going downstream. And so what has happened is some sediment has built up behind that check dam, and now the pond is holding water, which it needs to be drained. So, these easements that are being requested are kind of the last piece of the puzzle to get our civil plans approved, so we can get contractors onsite and get these items addressed.
So, let me ask, so let me ask you a question. Can you put a fence up until you get that done, if we agree to do the easements?
We actually already have an orange construction fence.
I know, well, kids can get over that, but I mean, can you put a, can you put a six-foot fence up temporarily?
You're asking for a six-foot temporary fence?
Something around it, to keep the kids away from, I live right behind there. And so the kids that come down, the little entryway that we made, we got to replace the sprinkler, I mean, the little heads that we put on that, because kids play in the water. So if they see water like that, that orange fence wouldn't stop them from getting in there, if they really wanted to get in there, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. We, we can visit with Public Works about timing of when we could get a fence put in, because one of the first things we need to do as well is, there is a stone wall that needs to be built into the pond. So, we could, we could get with Public Works to see if the timing works to where, maybe we put the fence in before the wall is built, or maybe as soon as the wall is built, we can put something in that's more sturdy.
Something temporary, you know. They have it around the fire department, everything where they're building, I noticed, so, to keep kids out, I'm pretty sure.
Yes, we'll definitely look into a taller fence.
Yeah, I mean, to me, yeah, the six-foot fence could, but what I'm hearing also too, you aren't not being, let's say, good neighbors. You're not keeping the place up tidy, things like that. And regardless of where you're at in the process, it's your responsibility to keep your, to keep your land and your area tidy.
I understand that, and we do have weekly inspections, you know, there's a SWIP, you know, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan in place. So every week, the site's inspected, punch lists are generated from that, and we address those and share those with the city as well.
Should we?
Either, it's either once a week or soon after a major storm event like we had, like we've been having. They go out there the day after and check.
So, what commitment do we have for you to get this fence fixed?
I can't speak, I mean, I can get with Public Works to talk about the possibility of putting in a fence, and just, like I said, the timing of it.
I got no problem tableing this until they come up with a solution.
And I agree with Councilmember Lawson. You know, we've heard a lot of complaints about your, your company, or whoever's doing the construction work from the first day. And Mr. Lawson is correct, y'all have not been good neighbors. And we expected more from you. And it makes it very difficult for us to try to make a decision when it negatively impacts our citizens.
I would ask, if there is a list of concerns, we'd love to take a look at those and help address those. The, I knew there was an issue with the, a concern with the pond. Aside from that, this is new to me, so we'd love to see a list of your concerns, and we can work with the city on that.
I'm sure the city can pull that together for you. Where does this water dump, or where's the water supposed to dump into?
There's an existing pipe under Woodcrest Avenue that takes it to the park to the east.
And from the park, where does this go?
Does it go in the stream in the park?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, could I interject a couple things?
Yes, sir.
I want to remind everybody, the rainfall amounts we've had have been a record rainfall, hundred-year flood type precipitation. So the drainage pond is meant to hold water for a short period and start draining off, but he's exactly correct, they put provisions up to keep the soil from brooding away. They're early in the construction part of it, so that hampers it, and the amount of rainfall, the water's got to have somewhere to go. So all down the stream, it's been backed up, that they're not the only site that's having this problem. So, I know leveraging, holding up the project and getting their civil plans for this is certainly not something the city staff would recommend, but I want to be clear, I haven't been to the site to see the pond itself, but if there's a safety concern, we have mechanism in place to address that.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
I'd like to point out that, that pond is, actually, it looks deep, but it's only about two foot deep when it's holding water. They checked it today. My inspector was out there.
Were you out there today, Jeff, when they?
Yes, sir. And it, it's basically a flat bottom pond, it's, you know, when it doesn't rain, it's dry. It's not like a pond that holds water all the time, it's only for drainage purposes. And really, so the only reason it is holding water is because a rock check dam, which is about two to three feet tall, has got sediment blocked up behind it and is keeping it from draining out. So, it's, like Mr. Newman said, it's probably two to three feet deep.
How do we fix that sediment?
Well, once we get a contractor onsite, he can pull that sediment back away from the check dam and let, you know, the check dam is a filter. It'll filter that water out and let it pass through it.
How soon can you get that done?
We have contractors standing by as early as this week to get onsite and get started.
Yeah, so that's why I don't want to hold this up, because he's waiting on civil plans to get the contractor there, right?
Yes, sir.
That's the thing, so civil plans approval, we got to prove this item tonight goes to the civil plans, which goes to the contractor, right? That's sort of how the flow is. So Randy, that's what's going to happen next? We approve this, civil plans get approved, and they move forward?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, so that's why I would definitely not want to hold this up. I know y'all want some leverage, but we can do leverage other ways, but I don't want to hold the project up.
So Randy, is there any way we can step up, say, our patrol of this area?
Absolutely. Our inspector goes by there, Bill Hurst, every day, just about checking things out. Of course, there's not a crew there, so he's just kind of relaying things that he sees to their guy, and, but yeah, we can, we can definitely.
Yeah, and that's what's got me concerned, I mean, he's not over there, and we do have citizens that are saying that, you know, it's an uncapped site, now we got this pond issue, so. And like I said, you know, we go ahead and, I understand you want to move on, but then again, you know, you got to be a good neighbor. If not, then, you know, we're where we are now. So, none personal, but since I've been here, I've had other people on other things come in and say, "Ah, we'll look into that." And then once we approve it, we got no leverage, so. So somehow, you know, you got to convince us that you're going to do your due diligence, and you're going to correct the errors of whoever it is out there that your company or whatever company has that has, you know, that's supposed to keep that site tidy, so to say.
I would, yeah, I could get with Mr. Newsom and see if there's a mechanism in place that the city can, or Public Works can, you know, give us the timeframe to get the fencing in place, and if that deadline's not met, you know, project is delayed.
Keep the fence in place, keep the garbage picked up, keep the sediment dug out of the street, you know.
Yeah, rather than have, you know, if you've got a crew onsite, you can get people out there right then, rather than Bill goes by, sees it, and he has to call, and you have to wait for somebody to get there, so it would definitely expedite everything.
I have a question. The temporary fencing like they have around the fire department right over here and everything, can you not get that and put it around that area? That wouldn't take but a day or two.
I'm not quite sure what kind of fencing it is.
It is chain link, but there are panels that they set up and hook together, and that would, that would, you know what I'm talking about, right?
Chain link construction fence, essentially what it is.
It's chain link fence, but it's hooked together so kids couldn't get through it, I mean, you know, a temporary or something.
Yeah, I would probably think that takes two or three days to find, find a supplier and order it and get it in place.
I think there was some discussion about just pumping the pond down today with Bill out there onsite.
And that's true too. If the pond were dry, you'd still want the fence in place, Claire. Or is it the presence of water?
Well, we don't know how bad the weather's going to be the rest of the time.
So, yeah, because we're coming up on the rainy season.
It's going to rain.
It's going to rain, so, I mean, it might be cheaper just to put up a temporary fence from a company or something and get them to do that, but.
And this is at no additional expense to the city, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
I think, I think we want to consider what we impose on one contractor, because we have other construction sites throughout the city where that hasn't been imposed, so that could, that could cause us some problems at some point.
Well, this one is so close to a school, and they all walk through there, because that little area right there is really infested with kids.
And the neighbors are complaining, and they've been complaining since day one.
Not infested, but you know, that was the wrong word to use.
Alright, so let's say we approve this tonight. How quick can you get a contractor out there?
We can have a contractor out there this week to start.
If we approve it tonight, how quick can the civil plans get approved? How quick does that happen, Randy?
We can, we can make that happen this week.
Okay.
Sign off on them, and they're good to go.
Okay.
Contractor, clear up that, get the drainage going.
And you're going to keep up with this this week?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for this gentleman? Alright, thanks, sir. Appreciate you coming in. Are council any other questions, concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion. For D.
For D.
Well, Mayor, I will make a motion, but he has to do what he said he did to accept this. So get it done, please.
Do I have a second? Mayor, second, although in favor, I guess we vote. Keith? We'll vote. And Paul has to abstain.
He had to abstain, okay. I wondered where he went.
Yeah. He's got a conflict because he lives close.
Well, I live in the Dominion.
Alright, motion passes. Thank y'all. Let's get this together, let's make it happen.
Should I have abstained?
No, I think most of those are here. Alright, moving forward. Item five, International Award of a Bid for East Cement Creek Channel Reconstruction. For that, Public Works Director, Randy, Randy Newsom.
Mayor, again, Council, this is a project that we've been working on, it seems like forever. It's been delayed by Encore getting the franchise utilities in there, then we had to get the easements taken care of, to get back in there. And so, all that's done, we got it out and got it bid out on the streets, and the apparent low bidder, or the low bidder was Humphrey and Morton Construction Company. There were four, four bids on the, on the project. Kimberly Horn is, went through the bids and verified that everything is the way it's supposed to be. The budgeted amount was 1.5 million, the engineers' estimated cost was 1.9, and the bid was 1.3, and that includes the alternate bid, which allows us to go about a few more hundred feet back to the north, which is what we wanted to do as far as we could on this phase of the contract or the project, and then finish it up in Phase Three. So, the low bid was 1.3, and council, our staff would recommend y'all approve for the...
Alright, this is from the Drainage Utility Fund, which we already have budgeted.
Yes, sir.
Yep. This is about what we anticipated. Any questions for Randy? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we award the bid and add it, additive alternate bid to Humphrey and Morton Construction Company as presented.
Cindy Second? Let's vote. Motion passes. Thank you, Randy. Appreciate it. Alright, moving forward, I'm going to call an audible. We're going to move item number 14 up to here right now. Item 14, Work Plan Update. We're going to move that to in front, to item number six. So for that, City Manager Gabriel.
Mayor and Council, my mother's probably watching as well. Hello, Mom. Happy to give you an update on our work plan projects tonight. So, as you'll recall, the mayor and council adopt a resolution each year that sets priorities for our organization, and that's what you hold me accountable for delivering, all of us. So, I'm going to go through all these projects, and if you have any questions during, please stop me. We'll play Help From A Friend, have plenty of people that are able to answer questions along, gathered among us, and Mayor Pro Tem requested my review mid-year, so, first for me, and going on five years, I've never had a mid-year review, but I'm looking forward to hearing what you might say. So, again, we're going to go through these dozen or so projects, and please do let me know if there are questions. Really small. There we go. So, March 15th, 2022, earlier this year, which I believe that was the same meeting when we start our annual budget planning workshops, we start early to talk about the big issues, which we'll get to later, that's coming to action time tonight, we identify the work plan projects. So the question is, where do these projects come from? And the answer is, all of you, right? You take action on these projects and say, hey, here's our priority for the year. And then we go do the fun part and get to work. So, you may recall, in the Belt Mill Development, which is the corner of Bailey-Boswell and Saginaw Boulevard, we have been dedicated approximately five acre space for a future public use. Now, what that use is, is to be determined in the future. These are discussions we'll likely have, maybe by the end of the year, so we can have some inkling of forward direction. There's also some talk about maybe acquiring some adjacent land in that area that developers next to the parcel, that the city has, we may want to expand our footprint for that future public space. In recent times, the developer has requested some ideas for historical markers and features. You may recall that the developer wanted to put some, like, plaques or placards, things of interest around the trails that'll be in the Belt Mill Development. I think it'll have a Saginaw tie, so it'd be a lot of fun to go walk that trail and see these things that are unique to Saginaw. So, look forward to talking about that further. Any questions on space planning? No?
I have a question.
Okay.
You had talked about the trails, but I thought most of those trails were inside the gated community and not available to the public at large.
No, there are public sidewalks and trails throughout the development. There is, I think, you might be referring to one of the rental communities that will have private amenities, a private dog park, but they'll be connected trails and public sidewalks, just like, you know, you see out in front of us on that corner.
Okay, thank you.
It's a good question, thank you.
Will these trails be linked in to our existing trails within the parks, park trail system?
I may call on a former city employee who's in the audience. You know the answer to that? The trails in Belt Mill, do they link to any other trailheads?
Well, we have a ton of trailheads, per se, but sort of the American plan and the tourism plans, and all things, the thing really, going over in the old verse, going westward. Yeah, I think, the old ones are unique, and it's oscillating, the railroad and arterial stuff, it will pretty much be oscillating, really not too much at the trouble. The ponds are reviewed, especially, the San Jose Station, the, you know, a lot of the show, protection, if you do, a good foundation.
Yeah, good question, we'll talk about further in the future as plans come in. Next project is Bond Project Delivery. So, Knolls Phase One, started construction earlier this calendar year. The question might be, well, why did we start at the north section of Knolls? The answer is, the north section of Knolls has significant drainage issues. So that, I believe it's Edwards to Woodcrest, that phase, we're going from north to south because of drainage issues. So when Knolls Phase One is complete, the vast majority of the cost, it's 6.8 million or some, for that phase, it's a giant storm sewer. Y'all in the area driving by, you may have seen the big concrete boxes, storm sewer boxes, that's going to be underground, and at some point, it's going to carry that water away. So, provide relief to streets like Leatherman and John Kennedy, which Randy and I were out a couple weeks ago in the rain event, you know, there was water well up into the street. Can't promise in a, in a hundred-year event, there won't be water in the street, but it'd be vastly improved with a storm sewer system.
I know here, just in the last few days, those folks probably wish that was finished already.
Yeah, yeah.
That was all the way up into their back doors.
Yeah, it can't come soon enough, and the project you just approved will help as well. So, the roundabout, so... as well, so, the roundabout, so, the intersection of Bowes and Knolls, the contractor finished a single lane roundabout, August thirteenth, which their commitment was, they were gonna finish that before school started, so they made it by two days. All reports are, it's been, you know, it, it's been in use now for going on a month, and we haven't heard any issue.
That's too much blood out there, or anything? I've, I've heard terrible things about roundabouts, so you know, I'm concerned.
I'll go to the chief, the chief made sure that a, that a fire truck could go through, and it was his recommendation, that it was the safest...
I drive through it every day, and I don't like it, but, no, no accidents thus far.
Excellent.
And hopefully, hopefully it stays that way.
We'd like to hear.
And so, there will be sidewalks on the, is it the west side? The, the west side of Knolls, so, you know, that's certainly a priority for pedestrian mobility, kids going to school, that sort of thing. We identified a project to initiate zoning of, city-initiated zoning of undeveloped parcels. We have an action item later tonight to create a new zoning district, so if the council approves that, the intent would be to apply that zoning to some sort of high priority corridors in the future, and rezone those parcels so that they can develop in the future in keeping with the comprehensive plan that the city council approved earlier this year, I believe, also in March, which sounds like was a busy, busy month.
So, so this is actually the implementation, the beginning of the implementation of the comprehensive plan we passed?
That, that's correct, and if you may recall, the comprehensive plan was a hundred-some-page document, there are a number of action items that, you know, likely could be future year work plans, you know, things like destination sign, signage, wayfinding, that sort of thing, so we'll be referring to the comprehensive plan for quite a while. And again, if the council approves the neighborhood mixed-use district, the intent is to apply that to a few parcels that are kind of high interest to initiate a rezoning.
One of the things that we had asked of you back in March, I wanna say it was the March fifteenth meeting, is that on some of these, I know it's difficult, but we'd asked for you to provide to us somewhat of a best guess schedule, and about what it was gonna cost for some of these tasks.
Sure.
And, of course, I worked in research and development for many, many years, and schedules slide all the time.
Sure.
And, you know, I haven't seen anything about that, I know, I would assume that most of this council up here is interested in more commercial rather than more homes, because we wanna take the tax burden off of the citizens. More retail, you know, shopping and things here in Saginaw.
So, Keith's got a presentation related to the, the neighborhood mixed-use, which will be our first, if council approves, potential city-initiated rezoning, he'll present that earlier, and then, friendly neighborhood, Abra Nasser from Peloton is here to answer any planning-related questions. So we can move as, as quickly as you'd like with that.
Still would like to see some dates and schedules and...
So if, if the neighborhood mixed-use is approved this, this evening, pending council approval, we would go ahead and initiate rezoning on at least those two parcels on Old Decatur and McElroy, so that's a two-step process, it would go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which would be in October, and then go to the city council for action October on those parcels.
So why wouldn't we do something more on the...
And then if there's any other parcels that the city council would like to initiate a rezoning, we can have that discussion, happy to get your feedback.
Why aren't we working that first on the east side of town instead of the west?
I think because there's been the, the most development pressure related to those parcels, you'll recall the city council denied a rezoning request at the corner of McElroy and Old Decatur a month or two back. Again, the intent is to rezone those parcels in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Now, let's say the city council chooses to approve a rezoning in the future, it doesn't guarantee that they'll be built, you still have to have a developer, someone sells a property at some, these are things the city doesn't control, we don't control, you know, when development happens, we do control what it might look like, the land uses, that could happen at a certain parcel, but if you have specific parcels that, you know, you would like some attention, would love to have that feedback.
People keep saying they need things to do on, at places to eat, places to shop on the east side of town.
Yeah.
That's where, I think that's where we need to start.
Yeah.
And those are the types of information bits that we'd like to see included in the work plan.
Sure, so you'll recall, I give a monthly update to you, the city council, on all of these projects, please look at them and give me feedback, this is very good feedback, I'm appreciative.
Well, this is what we asked for in March.
One of the questions we did ask is how many parcels were left in the city, and we hadn't gotten that, so we got...
Undeveloped parcels, so...
Wasn't that on Abra's map?
Yeah. Yeah, you wanna handle that? That'd be great.
Hi, so, Abra Nasser, Peloton Land, in terms of number of undeveloped parcels or tracts, we could pull that count for you very quickly, even as, as soon as tomorrow, but we would have to define undeveloped, and we would have to define, you know, properties, because some of these are unplatted, some of these, you know, might just be underdeveloped and that type of thing, so, we can get you, you know, the, the tracts with grass on them, but they might not be undeveloped, they might be used for agricultural purposes or something.
Well, these were tracts that you had already identified.
So we've got the neighborhood mixed-use ones with this match, and I've got a map of that, that I showed last time, and I, I've got it again tonight, if y'all wanna look at that again, but it's the undeveloped parcels that were designated neighborhood mixed-use in the comprehensive plan. Does that answer your question? But happy to provide more information, if you need that tonight.
Okay.
Just let me know.
Thank you, Abra.
So, Gabe?
Yes, sir.
One of the, one of the big things that citizens have asked for is like destination places, like sit-down restaurants, and we've gotten a couple just here recently that was announced, right?
That's right.
And that in Belt Mill, where it was...
That's in the square, just north of Walmart.
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll get to a couple of those things, you've probably heard my spiel, the reason those restaurants are coming is because you, well, maybe not you personally, you're still a new guy, not new guy number one, new guy number two.
The old new guy.
But the previous city council in 2019 approved an incentive agreement to incentivize bringing those sit-down restaurants. So when land is zoned and entitled, if somebody submits a building permit and it meets that land use, it's gonna happen. A lot of people think, you know, you may have heard this a time or two, this may shock you, buckle up, you know, why is there another chicken restaurant in Saginaw, Texas? The answer involves looking at a mirror and saying, why do people in Saginaw like chicken? Because the market, the market brings that, the city does not choose, you know, which particular restaurant or user is coming, the city council does have control when we incentivize things like that, so, in the neighborhood mixed-use district, and Keith will talk about this later when we get to it, Abra may as well, we understand and recognize that people do want, you know, the, the local type coffee shops, the non-chain type restaurants, had a chance to say hello to Ms. Woodward here, she was a participant in our 2018 Citizen Summit, so it's kinda cool, some of these things we talked about four-plus years ago, going on five years ago, are now happening, so that's a lot of fun. The mixed-use part of the neighborhood mixed-use is that you have multiple land use types in the same tract, because you really can't think of a place where you wanna shop or you wanna go eat, I promise you, there's a blend of commercial, restaurant, retail, and residential in close proximity, so all these things work together, yeah. The next project, we identified having a, a show and tell, so we have, that will be split into two, two traveling road shows, one on September tenth, we're going to have Public Works, I believe, and Finance, is that correct, at the farmer's market, so we'll use the community booth at the farmer's market this coming Saturday, shameless plug for the Preparedness Fair, I think I saw Joe's back there somewhere, but we do have our Preparedness Fair, year two going on that same day, and then we'll come back and have our other departments follow up at a later date, interact with residents and answer questions, it'd be a lot of fun.
I have a question. How come that wasn't ever advertised on the city website?
That's a good, yeah, we'll, we'll put that out tomorrow, and let people know that the community booth will be Finance and Public Works this Saturday, that's a great point, thank you. Next item is our citywide customer satisfaction survey, so, we will probably do, or we will do a workshop with you in the near future, Pedro has some research, some sample questions, that sort of thing, that we wanna bring to your attention, the intent would be to go live with that in the fall, gather information, and then scrub, scrub the data and the responses by the end of the calendar year.
Can I ask you why we're doing another one? We've done so many surveys and needs assessments and stuff, that we know what we want, the citizens want, we know what they need, so...
Sure, so, March fifteenth, when this was adopted, that's what the, the council identified as a priority project, I don't think we've done a sort of a true citywide-type survey, so the intent, and again, we can go over sample questions, the intent is, we wanna know how satisfied people are with, you know, the police department, street repair, that sort of thing, so, to answer your question, that's what the council, minus the new guy, wanted in March.
And again, this was something else we had asked you for, we wanted a schedule, we wanted what the budget was gonna be.
Yeah, we included...
Would you please tell us what the budget is for this particular survey?
Yeah. Pedro, do you remember?
Mayor and council, actually, this is a budget item, it's a specialized, $12,000.
$12,000? For a survey?
That's...
How many people have responded to the surveys that we've had in the past, what, four, five years?
The reason why it's such a high cost is that the...
Could you get to the microphone so the people can hear?
Pedro, just come, Pedro, just come here.
Thank you, Mayor and council, to answer the question, it's gonna be up to $12,000, because we're gonna be doing this survey much different, it's not, it will be online, but we will also be mailing out the survey to all, I believe it's, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it's 7,500 residents, but that's not just single families, that is every single multifamily, anybody who has a water account with us and multifamilies, so we're gonna be using the post office for that, and the post office does charge to send, that's gonna be about, I don't have the, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but it's gonna be around 6,000, but if somebody mails it back, the post office will charge us every time someone charges, sends it back.
How many of you read all the paperwork that comes in your water bill? Show of hands. Not very many people, so I just don't, you know, I mean, I get these attachments on my email, and I just look at the water bill, and it, it's been historical in the past that we really haven't had a good enough cross-section of responses, was it one that Abra took care of, had what, 87 people respond to that survey? You know, it, but it's not...
377 was the response from the peanut gallery.
The responses haven't been high enough...
Sure.
To get a good, and I'm not sure that that's something that we need to look at for this next year.
Again, the council, as a body, not individuals, said this was a priority project, March fifteenth...
But that doesn't mean we have to follow through with it, based on the information that you're providing us.
If you would not like to move forward, let me know, that'd be great to hear that feedback tonight, or we can circle back.
We're saying we didn't get enough survey responses last time, so Pedro just outlined how we can get more survey responses, which will cost money, so what do we want? Do you wanna not pay for this, or do you wanna not get good survey responses, or do you wanna get survey responses? Staff is getting conflicting feedback from council, so we need to be clear.
It's a one-time expense, so if you don't wanna mail it out, that's fine, we'll just...
So let's, the reason for the survey is to give the citizens a chance to give unbiased feedback to how they feel the city is meeting their expectations, on a department-by-department basis, police, fire, public works, you know, parks, so to say, and that's different than the others where we asked them what you would like, exactly.
Understand.
And...
But it's, a survey is a survey.
Yeah, it's a survey, so, we, we can look at it and say, okay, when we do this, part of getting the, you're, you're not, you know, anytime you have it, you're 30%, 20%, 30% statistically speaking, is phenomenal for a survey.
Understand.
That's just the way it is, but...
But 300 is not. But 300 is...
Yeah, 300 is not, so the, the key, the key is, is when they send this out, all of us need to do our part, and, you know, reach out to our citizens, to our neighbors, and say, hey...
No, we have a communication, but see, we talked, just talked moments ago about show and tell over at the farmer's market, but that hasn't been advertised, and here we are, September the sixth, and that, at the end of September the sixth, and that's happening on September the tenth.
Yeah, absolutely, that's from...
So, this is what I'm saying, is, you know...
I'm happy to delay that if you'd like, so we could, on that item.
You know, we've got to be able to advertise this, tell people it's coming, and not just show up in your water bill.
Right, so the, the key here is, I personally think this is, is important, to give the citizens a, a way to, to, you know, us not just assume, you know, that everything's hunky-dory, but to actually look and see what they're unhappy with, you know, what areas are we not excelling at, or what areas that we have needs improvements in. All of us can improve, every area in here can improve.
Absolutely.
Somehow, though, we need to figure that out.
Gabe, sorry to interrupt, so this is not, I just wanna clarify, this is not gonna go into the water bill, it's gonna be a separate mail to that individual, so, again, I'm from a different city, I do give my water bills in the mail as well, and I, I, again, I understand, you just take all of everything out, out there, so that's why the approach was not to put it in the water bill, but as a separate mailer, so I just wanted to clarify that point.
But again, if we're gonna invest this money, I wanna make sure that we get more than 300 responses back, and again...
You can't determine...
Yeah, I don't think we can guarantee responses, but we can guarantee that we've cast a wide net.
So, so let's...
No, I'm not buying that.
Why can't we take an action item to come up with some novel ways to get solicited feedback, so, I mean, we got these Saginaw residency page, we got the farmer's market, get a table, pass them out.
Yeah.
We got the training grain coming, that's a fine example of, let's get her out there on the training grain, maybe get some volunteers to pass some suckers out, let's, that's what I'm saying, if, if that's what we're worried about, let's come up with some solutions to, you know...
Yeah, I, like I say...
I guess it's very like we're to browbeat our citizens into giving us information back.
I, I think the intent was to come back to you in a workshop and present the general question, so, if you think of a work, a, a survey you take, you know, you don't want it to be 100 questions, there's probably a, I don't know what the magic number is, 20 questions, let's say, but we'll, we'll talk through that and, and ways to disperse it out in the community.
But again, it's, it's a lot of money, and it's gotta be done right.
I completely agree, yeah, feedback is really important.
I mean, we...
The, the survey, let's make the, survey in itself, if we don't use that to come up with the next step of instituting solutions to solve the needs improvement areas, then the survey was useless, so...
And that was gonna be my next question.
I will say that immediately, as soon as the survey's done and we calculate the data, then we need to make absolutely sure we look at the needs improvement areas and make motions to get those fixed.
So it's good, our statistical analysis, I think, will be done in-house, I know a guy, can't name name, that has a master's degree in statistical analysis, so, I only took like three semesters of stats, as a math major, but, anyway. Moving on, code enforcement area, as we do the past two years, council chooses a focus area, the focus area this year is Rancho North, I believe that, I think Larry is in the back, they have started doing neighborhood visual inspections in Rancho North, contrary to popular belief, we, we don't shoot first, so there's always notices of violation or friendly recommendation letter before we ever get to citations or things of that nature in town, as we have done the past few years, is to do a wrap-up type workshop in the fall, and it's been very helpful in past years in code enforcement focus areas.
Where we at on this, how many, how many, maybe not violations, but warnings that we've given out, what have we seen?
Yep.
You need more of my glasses?
You know what? You see, I did forget mine, but I think I could hold it back far enough to see it. So, we did start on Rancho Drive was part of a, obviously, just want to remind you, I've got two code enforcement officers, one in training. So, I've got to be careful how much we write up because we've got to follow up on it. So, we started at Rancho Drive. There are 28 parcels, and out of those 28, there are 13 violations, houses with violations, which could be trash cans, public view, like we normally see. It could be, this actually includes some junk vehicles, some substandard fences, and let's see, looks like we've also referred two of those to, it's vehicles in the street, inoperable vehicles in the street. So, we are started on it, and that's, that's kind of up to date as, as we're speaking.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate you hopping on. So, Gabe, we'll choose another area next year and just... That's right. Yep, that's been the past practice. The council kind of pick a target area and then concentrate staff in that area. So, it's been successful.
It's kind of neat. I had, as I was getting in my truck to drive here, I had code enforcement drive by my house. And I will have to say, I kind of tightened up just a little bit as they drove by to keep everybody honest.
Next project is ordinance review and recommendations for changes. So, unfortunately, with ordinance changes, nothing is simple or quick. We've outlined a ordinance change that has some parking requirements that are related regarding carports. So, you'll recall, we've tabled that. Larry and staff are working on some design criteria for the carport, which would, if the council approved, it'd be allowed by SUP only. There's some other parking standards citywide that Doug and Larry are reviewing. I believe we should have action items for you to review here in the next couple of months or so.
Again, with the requests that we made back on March fifteenth, I'd kind of like to see an outline of what area of ordinances that you're looking at.
Sure.
Another thing that, when I was campaigning this year, is I've heard several people complaining about the way, and no offense to Larry, wherever you are back there, about the way that code enforcement addresses these issues. There's very little discussion with the people, but the paperwork that they have hasn't changed. Evidently, they're not talking to people, advising them how to correct the problem. So, we need to fix that as well at the same time. That may be changing the forms of the letters that they send out to these homes. But just to tell people, your boat is parked illegally, isn't enough. You know, we need to know what code they're violating. We need to have an understanding of how to correct this problem, not just say that, oops, you're bad, give me money.
Yeah, that is...
And that's, that's totally unfair. It's totally unfair, Sandy. I will speak for our code guys. That is not what we do. We're better than that. Sandy, you've talked to people who are angry. I've talked to our code folks. I've talked to other people. That's not how we do our business. I know it's not. We've been, been over backwards working people over many, many years. So, that's unfair to point that finger at our code folks too, because a couple of angry people venture here.
Well, and I've talked to more than a couple of angry people, and...
So...
But let's, let's put the resolution on the paperwork that we send out to these residents.
Thank you for the, the feedback. It's helpful. I think Councilmember Lawson, we've had a couple of instances where we've sat down with staff because he's, he's heard maybe some of the feedback, you know, they're picking on me, or what can I do? And we resolve it. Again, we're not a...
If you write somebody up, they get mad.
That's right.
Absolutely, and I understand.
In the wrong, they get mad, and they blame it on the city.
And I understand that.
Because we can't fight back. But I'm going to fight back and tell them that's just crap. I'm sorry. Our people are better than that. We don't do it like that. And that's, I would not come behind the dais and say that and insult our staff like that. So, no. That's not how we do business.
And we never issue a citation first. We issue a notice of violation. You have a time to correct. You know, Doug, Larry, staff, there's a process. We're, we're very reasonable in that approach.
So, two things I would like to see on this, Cindy, is one, if we could get a list of ordinances that we intend to, within this thing, to update, you know, in order of, so you want to say, I think you mentioned like the, the parking area and the, what do you call it?
Carports and North Street Park.
Okay, like I say, that's one. Two, and just list them in order of, that, that would be nice. So, that we could at least say, okay, we got, we got 25 ordinances here, and we got them ported. At least then we could look at it and say, oh, okay, so this is how much of an effort we've got to do. And I know that ordinances is, you know, is like a tart baby. When we touch on them, all of a sudden, you have to start looking at interconnections and things like that. But the thing about it is, I think code enforcement, everybody agrees that we have quite a few ordinances that do need updating. I talked to citizens and officers. It would be nice if we could at least get those ported. And then sometimes when we're dealing with the general public, not everybody's an engineer. Not everybody works in the construction business. So, like, I had to reach out at one time because it talked about a, one of the ordinances, and it talked about a monolithic ground. And I'm like, okay, well, monolithic means like a solid piece. I had to call them and say, are you saying that this has to be a solid piece of concrete all the way back? And, and that wasn't the intent. So, I think that's where a lot of our citizens, that's where they actually need help is, you know, they're, they're not experts in these areas, and we need to take that extra step to explain it to them. I, I think that's kind of where, anyways, that's where I'm coming from is, is, you know, instead of saying, you, you know, your boat's a violation, and you got 28 days or five days to move, move it off. And it is a generic form, you know, when they call or something, maybe we put on their, you know, hey, you could do this. And, you know, because when, when you read, you know, you need a monolithic platform. Like I say, the average person out there is not going to know what that means.
Sure.
So, so, and that's kind of where I get it. We need to understand, not everybody's in construction, not everybody's an engineer.
Understand. Yeah. Okay. Next item, oops. We are planning a cultural event at Training Grain. So, our sister city of Banjul, Gambia, the city council approved funds from the hotel occupancy tax unanimously earlier this year to pay to have some of our friends from Banjul come join us in October. We've submitted the visa request to the embassy, and we're waiting on approval. Once that happens, we'll book those tickets, and they'll be with us for Training Grain. You may recall from last year, there's a local Gamian American Association called the Gambia, Texas Association. They'll have a booth. They'll be able to answer questions. And I, from what I understand, the mayor, her name is Rohe Malaklow, is very popular in Gambia. She's bringing media, so she draws attention. So, a lot of the, the Gamian Americans here would be happy to see her. She's, she's a little bit of a celebrity, I guess. So...
I have a remark about that also. The Training Grain, it has not been advertised very much. I don't know if you've noticed this or not, but it's like a month and a half away. And there has been very little advertising about it. Y'all better get it out there, or we're not going to have anybody show up.
Sure.
And it would be nice. I mean, this is a huge opportunity, so we really need, need to advertise this.
Yeah, we've, so we've got a, it may be too soon. Janice is in Training Grain retirement, but was it the ranch? So, when, do you know, or maybe Pedro knows, when that advertisement goes?
That normally starts a couple of weeks before.
Okay.
And it'll ramp up. They'll, as the days go by, they'll increase their frequency and how often they do that. And it'll be on both stations in the end.
That repetitive advertisement helps a lot, and I have not seen...
No, I agree. We just got our supply chain difficulties. We just got our new t-shirts in. So, those are on sale this week. They're kind of light blue and yellow. They're, they're really nice. They've got our sponsors on the back, so if anybody wants one, they're $10. Can buy them here at City Hall or the event. So, yeah, I agree. It's really close to the biggest party in the city here.
So, we all need to get one of those shirts and start wearing it to advertise.
You should, yeah. Model it. And we did, it was super popular. If you remember, last year, we had the tote bag. So, we ordered 2,500, I think, of those in the same kind of matching color, and I'm sure we'll pass them all out. It's really popular. Oh, you don't have to buy them? Right, yeah. Just whoever comes, we, we give them away. So, the pavement management assessment, we, city council approved a contract for an assessment earlier this year. That was finished, and I believe that was presented to the council in May. We will use that assessment and that framework to drive decisions for our street repair and replacement needs in the future. It's pretty much complete. We have the data. We will use that and refer to that in, you know, in future years to make repairs and replacements. And you might recall, kind of the phase two of that is we may start replacing water and sewer lines in conjunction with new pavement. So, we go in and based on age or, or general condition, just replace a section of the street. So, about that time, certain neighborhoods, you know, I bet there's some neighborhoods that, what, have 40, 50-year-old water lines? And, you know, it's just water and sewer, yeah, just time to be replaced. And the goal would be to, you know, the last thing you want to do is repave the street, tear it up, and then fix a water line. So, kind of partner that together and...
Gabe, that's, that's what we call the sum.
Yeah, we call that the sum program.
On that, Gabe, I mean, we, we, we sit here and we listen to that, and I know there's that sweet spot. So, and I know that later on during, earlier in the budget cycle, we actually talked about that. How much, how much would it cost for us to, to stay there, you know? Or, in other words, if we delay it, say, by another five, 10 years, it's going to cost us, you know, 200 or 300% more to get it fixed. So, I'm assuming that going forward, somehow that'll be calculated, and we'll, we'll know that, okay? If we don't get this fixed now, and, you know, in this much budget, it's going to cost the citizens a lot more later.
That's correct.
Is that...
Yep, good points. Next project is a home renovation incentive program. So, this would be a future workshop with, with you. The general idea is that probably what we'd recommend in the area where we're doing code enforcement, so Rancho North, that we offer a incentive program where homeowners, to meet health and safety and minimum code requirements, we offer some incentives to encourage substantial renovations. So, things like waiving a building permit fee, potentially offering a roll-off dumpster. We'll workshop that with you. Another idea that's come out of that, that's been a problem for Public Works, is replacing some of the private sidelines in the older neighborhoods. So, when we get rain events and water goes into private sideline and goes to our main, we're paying to treat that water. It's called inflow and infiltration. So, in the older parts of town, if we can replace with modern private side connections, we'll end up saving money by that, you know, sending essentially water that doesn't need to be treated, rainwater, to the plant. So, that's sort of the, the goal there. And again, before we, before we take action, we're going to workshop that with you to, to talk about some of the recommendations.
So, we have a certain amount of, in these older systems, a certain amount of our storm water going into the actual sewer lines?
Yes, we've done some INI studies. We had RJN come in and do some, we've kind of broken it down now. Then we know where our main problems are at as far as our sewer mains are concerned. Now, we're going to try to identify, which the majority in any city's the same, service lines are your main culprit now. People, you know, when they flush their commode, it works. They don't think a thing about it, even though when it rains, there's tons of water going down those service lines. So, those are the things we got to identify now.
We were doing INI studies for several years, right?
Yes.
The last 10 years, we've done several of those on different parts of the city. So, yeah.
And every, every new line replacement improves the problem, so, you know, roots can punch holes in mains. And so, yeah, we're, we're on top of it. Next, next project is police department accreditation through the Texas Police Chiefs Association. So, the phase of this project is our department, and the chief may touch on this, has prepared written and documented policies. They're being sent to a review board for review and approval. And I think my understanding is the holdup is, the reviewers are kind of backlog, so...
That, that's correct. Just like we're seeing staffing issues everywhere else. I mean, the TPCA uses volunteers that are police employees, executives, and things of that nature to work as reviewers. And everybody's encountering these staffing shortages, and therefore, they're pulling back their people to man shifts and to take care of situations back at home versus sending them out to review these policies. Some of the delays that we're experiencing.
So, can you, for the, maybe for the citizens here, can you explain exactly what this accreditation is?
Sure. I may defer to the chief.
Yeah, so the accreditation is 168 policies that the TPCA, Texas Police Chiefs Association, has identified as being best practices, kind of like the accreditation through CLEO, which is a national certification. This is a statewide certification that, once certified, just recognizes you going above and beyond as an agency to meet the requirements of these policies. So, it's kind of setting professionalism for your, your agency. And I think there's just shy of 200 agencies in the state that are currently certified. And so, it's something that many agencies are striving for, but it's not a simple process. It's a, a long process to submit and get, get your reviews. And then there's an audit that comes every two years with that as well.
So, something like this would definitely, I mean, basically what it's saying is, when you're credited, you're recognized as one of the, as one of the top departments in the state.
That, that's the goal of the TPCA, is to show that recognition that you're willing to go above and beyond in your policies and your procedures, how you treat people, how you, how we go about doing our business. We're saying we want to be held to that standard.
Doing a similar iteration in the Public Works Department, it's so difficult that it forced Rick to retire. So, Public Works Accreditation pushed him to retirement. Randy, don't retire. See it through. We should be a couple of years, or maybe even next year, that may be a work planned project for our Public Works Department. Next project, really exciting. As you know, the new fire station will be complete here. We should be operational there early in 2023. Not set in stone yet, but getting close. The intent is to recruit a destination restaurant and/or entertainment venue for, at the fire station site. So, we, we put out a public proposal, to receive proposals of interested parties. We've met with one operator, briefed you on some of the details, and so now it's really with the attorneys. I think Keith and I talked with, with Bryn and Drew Larkin from Toast this morning. Bryn didn't grow a beard. This is Bryn's substitute. So, Bryn couldn't be with us tonight, but thank you, Mr. Quatz, Fritz Quatz, for joining us. Hey, you were the short story. No, Bryn always likes, you know, attending SAGNO meetings. No, really, and maybe Keith can share, we're excited. I think the community's going to love what's proposed. That'll come to the city council probably within a month for those destination restaurants. We're super excited. You want to?
First, I was going to applaud Bryn for growing a mustache so fast, but I talked to you earlier today, and you, you didn't have that. So, very impressive. This is about three days worth, if you can see it. So, very impressive. It's something we've been working on, working on for a long time. You were talking about surveys and the benefits of surveys. And our city did a survey, well, two things. We did a citizen summit in 2018, and we got citizen feedback. We asked our residents, you know, what, what are the things that you want? In 2019, we did a survey that we mailed out and got about just under 1,100 responses back, asking our residents, what do you want to eat? What type of food would you like to, to eat at? What type of places would you like to shop? Give us names. Give us something to, you know, to look for. And that, that was one of the best things for me, because that's what I use to, when I'm looking for restaurants and I'm looking for retail. I see those names, and I see what they're looking for, and that helps me do my job. And quite frankly, it impresses the businesses when I say, here's our survey, and our survey says they want you here. And that works. We're very excited about this because this potential project came directly from that citizen summit, came directly from the citizen survey that we sent out, things that they asked for specifically, types of restaurants. That's, that's what we hope, if it comes, if it happens, that's what we're going to be able to provide to them.
So, hope, hope to have good news in the near future on that project. The next project, Keith briefed you on potentially re-establishing a chamber of commerce function. There's a few options to maybe partner with TCC to provide, you know, staff support, a space to meet. There's another organization that is kind of a regional chamber, so Saginaw may join that. Again, I want to... may join that. Again, I want to remind the council, Chamber of Commerce is not a city function. That's a private business association. We do, however, you have recognized it as being important to the community. All things come at a cost. So Keith is kind of, I think, going to put together a memo in the near future and sort of describe these options, and we'll figure out what your pleasure is regarding sort of a pilot program or kind of getting that that going again.
Will they be taking over the functions that they had in the past?
So the previous Chamber of Commerce is no more, as everyone knows. Everybody enjoyed the special events that they put on. I think Community Link has taken over a couple of those special events. The elected officials dinner, which many of y'all may have enjoyed, I'm trying to think what else.
Taste of Northwest.
Taste of Northwest, which the past couple of years, because of COVID, that's been canceled. I believe that Community Link is still committed to hosting those community events. Yeah.
I just have a kind of question. The Community Link and the Chamber of Commerce are both private.
Right.
Why do we support one and not both?
Yeah, I mean, like I said.
Why do we support the Chamber and not Community Link?
No, why do we support the Community Link and not the Chamber of Commerce?
We give money to the Chamber every year. It was in our bucket every single year.
Well, I know, but we didn't do it like we do the Community Link, did we?
We gave tons of money. We gave them, we'll tell them what they'll tax every year.
Yeah.
Part of their budget is our budget.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but the Chamber of Commerce gets committees through members through companies, right?
Business owners.
And I was I was trying to go back and find data on what went, because to me, you know, if we're going to start new, and I want to figure out what happened to the old one. And I seen, I forget where it was, but I seen things where, over time, they they're they were losing businesses. Businesses was no longer using us. That meant that the Chamber of Commerce, for some reason, was not providing the service to the businesses here in Saginaw. That's kind of what I got out of that, because they they went pretty low there at the end. And so the only reason that I can think of businesses that would not join a Chamber of Commerce is the Chamber of Commerce wouldn't provide in the service in which it was supposed to, not any other business, right?
Sure. And, you know, unfortunately, Misery Loves Company, there was a Northwest Terrent Chamber of Commerce, which was basically Lake Worth. That has since gone defunct. I think honestly, it's a numbers game. There's a you need a certain sort of a critical mass to make a chamber function.
Right.
You know, some successful chambers, and Keith has done research in the region, have kind of banded together multiple cities. So you're sharing costs, you're doing, you know, programming to benefit everybody. These are all things we may consider.
Right. Yeah. I mean, definitely, I would be, to me, you know, if we put money, if citizens money into this, I want to see an ROI.
Yeah, I understand. And again, it's not a city function. It's it's a, to your point, it's it's a a benefit to to business.
Exactly. Because even if we don't put money, we're still putting time and resources into it.
That's right. Yes.
And if it's not benefiting the business, then it's not benefiting the citizens. So therefore, why are we messing with it?
Right.
If I could add real quick, a few of the things that we do, like tonight, where I've got three different pieces of equipment in front of me, I wear a lot of hats. And one of the things that we've tried to do with with the lack of a chamber is chambers had luncheons. Some chambers have breakfast, where you have, you know, it's a lot of, there's networking prior to the the program. Then at the program, you have somebody getting up and speaking about something relating to the economy or economic development, things, different things like that. And then you have a lunch or a breakfast, and then you network and you go home or go back to work. That's what we have tried to pick up and do with our local business forum. Same thing. It's the exact, it's almost the exact same thing as a chamber luncheon. It's just ours happens to be at breakfast. We'll look at, if a lunch works better, we'll we'll consider that. We do that plus through my office, my staff of one, we we take, I work closely with Ray and his staff, and they provide me with the certificate of occupancies. And instead of asking them to come pick it up, I say, you give them to me. And then I go to the businesses and give them a little bag of goodies and then and meet each one of the business owners and talk to them that way.
I mean, a business owner, he's going to be, again, he's going to be looking to invest when you've got a certain amount of money. And so you say one of the things they do is do these breakfasts or lunches, in which we already do, our Economic Development Committee, which is of.
We're picking up the slack where we don't have a chamber. If there was a chamber, we probably wouldn't, we might not be doing that.
Again, I'd I'd really like to know how this Chamber of Commerce is going to help us. I mean, when I say us, Saginaw, AKA our businesses.
One of the tough things for, and Gabe kind of hinted on it, is the the smaller chambers are kind of, they're having trouble. They're struggling because they can't provide the same things that the larger chambers can do. They have a lot more capital to be able to put on different programs and different classes and locations. Where smaller chambers don't necessarily have that. I'll I'll, I'd like to come to you at a very near future work session just to talk about it and and the pros and cons of both of them, of either starting our own chamber or joining an established chamber that's very good, not just another chamber, but one that's one of the top ones.
If we start our own chamber, I absolutely want to know what happened to the old chamber, all the good, bad, and ugly, so that we don't make those same mistakes again. I don't want to go any other way to say it.
Sure. The the last project is to study the feral cat program. So if you'll recall, either the last meeting or the meeting before, we had a workshop. Jose and staff presented information about trap and release. So there are some costs related to a program like that that we have identified. Lee sent out an update. There are some questions, general questions about the feral cat program, reminding you all that your direction was to have a facility assessment. I think we all kind of recognize at some point in the future, the existing shelter, you know, we may want to improve. So we'll do a facility assessment to see what the space needs might be. So we have not proposed any of the expenses related to the the feral cat trap and release program until that facility assessment by an architect's completed. It likely will, you know, and I don't want to rehash the hour and a half. We we covered all ground on cats. So I left the meeting purring to myself. But we we really fussed and discussed plenty. And again, the intent is to come back with data, determine how much, you know, staff and space we may need in the future. So with that, that's the update on our projects. And, you know, a lot of a lot of good things happening so far, and a lot more to finish out this year strong. I will remind you, because really, it's not too early. If there are projects that are near and dear to you, let me know. We'll keep that on a list to adopt our work plan for next year. And, you know, once we adopt that by resolution, that's our marching order. So happy to answer any questions.
Well, Gabe, along with your work plan and everything, we also had some tasks that we asked you to do.
Okay.
Which you're pretty aware of, I'm sure.
Sure. Can you remind me?
Well, yeah, you've answered most of them.
Oh, that's good to hear.
There's a couple of them that I would like to have a little word on. On the March first one, we asked you to map out projects. So not too many of them were underway at one time. This has been ongoing for four years, how you put so much, and you rush us through the meetings, and we have to, we don't really have time to study some of the things that you give us. And I don't like being rushed, and I'm sure there's other people that don't like to be rushed. So that was one thing I wanted to talk to you about.
Sure.
And then I don't know if maybe you can slow it down just a little bit. I mean, we don't.
Yeah, if I might respond, anytime we talk and and we talk through maybe three or four workshops here.
Yes.
We generally, no one like surprises me or you or the public. We generally do a workshop before we bring any action items to you.
Well, the big thing, I think, is that you tell us that we have to do it or else kind of in a way. And it's kind of, I think it kind of scares.
No, I've never said that. I make recommendations.
I don't mean it that way. I mean it, what I mean is that you say that the staff recommends this, and and we need to think about this, just like the other things you just said a minute ago. So I think that we need to slow down a little bit, because I think we're getting just too much together too fast.
So and and this is good feedback. Maybe next year, we do half as many projects or a lesser amount?
Well, that would be great. Yeah, because we're really doing nothing.
In any way, me, brother, I'm always pushing Gabe to go faster. We go so slow with city stuff, I'm always encouraging him to go faster.
Here's the thing I think about.
So I I can think fast and move fast and talk fast. So I want people to move fast. And so, but it's on me. That's my fault.
Wow.
At least a little bit.
Okay, so can we slow down just a little bit?
I don't want to. No, it just takes us years to do things anyhow. And that's why I'm like.
Well, I understand. But I think when you rush it too much, you also overlook a lot of things. And there's a lot of times that we want, and we have started table and stuff. And the reason we do is because we need to study it. Some of us may not be as, I guess, as sharp as some other people. And so we have to study a little bit. And that's something we need to think about. There's seven of us here. We all don't think the same way.
And I don't want to arrest people, but I do want to make things happen, because we have a limited amount of time.
I understand that. And there have been some good things happening in Saginaw. But.
Sorry to interrupt you.
I know. And the other thing we ask you to do, and I know the budget's on the meeting tonight and the tax rate and everything, and we ask you to review, let the department heads review their portion to see if we couldn't get to save eight hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars so that we don't have to raise taxes and everything. Like I said, there are some good things going on. And we ask that we we wanted to reduce the budget so we don't have to raise the taxes. And I know the taxes. I know that they have to go up, or they you think that they have to go up. And I knew that they were going to be higher when we did the bond election. I get all that. But that the taxes is a small part of everybody's bill. The citizens already taxed with so much, and we said this before.
Sure.
But just like the electric bill, okay, I've done a lot of studying this weekend. According to the State Power to Choose website, the average residential rate in Texas for June of this year is eighteen point forty-eight per kilowatt hour. What that means is that there's eighty dollars a month for every thousand kilowatts that they use. That's a ten point five cent increase from last year at the same time. That's a lot of money for a person. And then you look at the groceries, the grocery store consumer product index increased one point four percent from June of this year to July. And it was thirteen point one percent higher from July of last year. It's a lot of money for people that's got a lot of kids, and they got to pay all these taxes. The water, and I know ours has to go up four percent, and that's because what we're.
For cost.
Yeah, I mean, they went up more than four percent, but we have to raise it. And I get it. But it's still four percent. And then, according to the latest report on the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the annual inflation rate in May was eight point six percent. Lot. It's the highest level since nineteen eighty-one, as measured by the Consumer Price Index. But on a good note, gas is going down, but we also have an election coming in November. So that's normal, pretty normal. When we did your, when you, we asked you to cut, to see where we could cut or whatever, your response in your email mainly, and I have it right here, most of it was to get rid of all the recreation that, wait, wait, wait.
Okay.
Let me finish, and then you can answer me, okay?
Sure.
Because I get nervous speaking anyway. You know that.
Me too. My mother's watching, remember?
Huh?
I'm nervous too.
I understand. Anyway, the first thing that you you mentioned to get rid of was the Christmas parade, the training, garing concert in the park, et cetera. And then at the bottom, you wanted to cut one fireman. Not you wanted, this is what was, this is what proposed.
Right.
Was to cut one fireman, one vacant police officer place, a maintenance worker, a part-time library assistant, and the salary and benefits of a part-time rec center.
So that is, if I may answer that, voters approved bond projects last year, correct?
Yes, sir.
At no time did the city council tell us staff, beginning in March, that they wanted to cut existing services, that is, police, fire, public work, special events, to pay for the increase that voters approved in the debt part of the tax rate. Further, I find this confusing. In May, the city council unanimously approved bonds for these projects. Now, these projects, you'll be reminded, are the library and senior center. So when we were asked at our last meeting, how can we potentially cut? I have given you options. You tell me if you'd like to cut.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
We have never been given direction to cut existing services.
That's what I'm saying.
So what I'm recommending to you, if that is your desire, to cut existing services, we don't have to do things like special events. Although, I will personally be upset. I really enjoy special events.
Well, what I'm saying.
I really enjoy the aquatic center, which is a recreational, a seasonal function. But if it becomes between that and, you know, Public Works, police, or fire, it's clear in the pecking order what the priorities are. So if it's your desire to reduce services, again, I don't make the decisions here. Y'all do. You need to tell us explicitly what you'd like to cut. It's that simple.
So what I'm asking you is, there's nothing else on that budget that you could cut besides these things right here?
So, and we talked about this in the past. All of our fixed costs in the city go back to two things, people and programs. So if it is your desire to cut, you need to tell me the people or programs, and we'll make the appropriate cuts. It's it's simple.
Okay, so.
And again, at no time, I'm sorry to interrupt, but when we were providing information for voters to weigh in, you attended many of the garage gab's as I did. And shameless plug, we're a finalist for a statewide award for garage gab's. A lot of fun. I hope we win. We never said, hey, voters, if you approve this, we're going to cut your services to pay for it. That is well within your right, if that's what you'd like to do. But that has never been the direction or the communication from staff.
But that's the only way you can cut our budget is by doing these things right here?
I.
And the reason I ask is because there's there's seven, there's several essential jobs in the city.
Sure.
We have to have fire. We have to have police. We have to have Public Works. That's what keeps us safe, secure, and keeps us running. Okay?
Completely agree.
And then we have other things that we have to do. We have to have inspections to keep the city up. We have to have, hang on, what's my little thing here?
Animal services.
Animal services. We have to have, the essential departments are the fire, police, and public. The other departments we have to have are inspections, human resources, library, community services, and animal services. Okay? And I know that you're in charge of the employees, and I get that one hundred percent. So I'm not trying to anything, okay?
Sure.
But there are several departments that you've added, and you have the right to do that. Per your admission, you took money from one place to fund that that department. That was what you said.
Can you explain that, the example? Remind me?
You took some of the police money to to finance the interns and stuff?
That's not true.
No, that's not correct.
Well, that's what you said.
Russell Russell said last time, explain what the situation was. That's not true.
Well, that's what you said you did. So whatever.
That's not true at all. You got to trace.
Kim, is that correct? I don't.
Okay, so, so maybe you.
So I, you know.
Okay, so this is the deal.
Okay.
Here's the deal. Okay, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
The communications department, which I know it's a new department, I'm just using it as an example, okay?
Uh huh.
It's under the division, I mean, it's under the on the organizational chart as under the Director of Community and Economic Development, correct?
That's Keith. Yep.
Okay, so if he's under that, and we didn't need a new department, I know that Todd wanted a communications department, and we haven't gotten anything different with it. Everything that was done before we made that department was, in my opinion, more advertised. It was more presented. I haven't seen near as much advertisement since we've had this new department. And so we're funding another department that's not really an essential department. And then we're having to to cut back on other things, like the fire department, police, whatever.
Sure. So that position, communications manager, became the sole staff person for our special events, which you, Mayor Pro Tem, are the queen of special events. I know how much you love special events. A lot of Pedro's position is coordinating that. As I outlined, there's a tremendous staff cost. That allowed Keith to get out of the communication business day to day and focus on other things. So, you know, previously, we had kind of two staff people, Karen and Janice overseeing that by committee. And so now Pedro is handling that, because there's more demands. People love special events and and want more of that.
Okay, but I haven't seen anything. And me being the queen of special events.
Sure.
I look for stuff like that.
Yeah.
And I haven't seen.
Randy, Pedro's been to the Parks Board. We're rocking and rolling on special events.
[inaudible]
Enough that PD said they wish they had more personnel. So we will, we'll have more folks next year. But yeah, probably a few thousand, a couple thousand easily.
I think what I'm trying to say is, and I know what I'm trying to say, I think that if you try to get rid of, I'm just saying, cut if we, whoever, cuts a police officer or a fireman, so we can have a communication department, I don't think that's a good choice of our essential employees.
Okay, so what.
And so I feel like, I feel like. And so I feel like, I feel like that the employees that, that we have, or whatever, departments that we have that are essential, need to be funded, but I'm sure that there's a way that you can cut that budget so that we don't have to cut our essential employees, and you can do, cut in other places.
So let me be very clear.
Okay.
What I recommended to the mayor and city council was the proposed budget, which does not cut services. The biggest dollar amount in that budget is to take care of our existing employees with cost of living adjustments, as well as absorb those costs that you mentioned the average homeowner, average business owner is experiencing. Our cost of electricity went up, our cost of water, our mowing contract on the city side went up. We've got to absorb that. If we don't, then we have a service level cut. It is simple. So I want to be clear in my recommendation. My recommendation to you is to keep our existing staffing. I've made it clear months earlier that, look, we may add positions in the future. We're on, as cities grow, a trajectory, right? So we're growing, which is a lot of fun. It's exciting. It requires more attention and resources. So I anticipate coming back to the council in mid-year and recommending we add more positions in police. Now thankfully, you just approved the CCPD budget, so as we grow in sales tax collections, we'll have more financial capacity to hire more staff.
Can I ask you a question about hiring staff? Did you give, did you tell the staff that we were having a hiring freeze, and we weren't going to give them a raise?
No, I have been very clear that what has been proposed in the budget is what we've told you all along since March. We've...
You never said anything about a hiring freeze?
I have never said anything about a hiring freeze. We're hire, we're filling all vacancies that we have. Any director?
Are we straying over into budget talks?
I mean, I'm having to have this discussion. I just would want to close with...
Should we move to the budget?
Listen, we're all on the same team. We may have a difference of opinion, but when a majority of the city council gives us direction, we have our marching orders, and we'll go get it. So I'm very proud of our staff, all that we've accomplished. We've got a lot of good ahead of us, so thank you.
So the communications, if, this is just me asking, if we cut the communications department, what would happen? I'm asking that because I'm sitting here, what would happen? So, so...
That's what I'm saying.
I'm just trying to figure out, you know, cause and effect, right?
Yeah. Well, we asked, we asked before how much the interns and all that was proposed for, the budget. I never got an answer for it. I don't know if anybody else did.
Yeah, we, I think we provided that cost. Lee sent you a memo on, I wrote that down because I figured it'd be on August second. There's some confusion about the summer apprentices and then our, our graduate interns, so, yeah, we've sent you those costs.
Lee sent a note out.
Yeah.
I didn't get it.
Yeah, Lee sent it to the council, and then I sent a personnel detail to the full, I believe council member Big Horse requested. I sent a personnel detail that Melanie prepared on April twenty-eighth, and then I resent it August second. It was requested, outlining every city position and vacancies.
It was a very large, multi-paged spreadsheet.
I guess I must have missed it.
All right, moving forward, we've got a lot more to go tonight. Anything else, any other questions, comments for Gabe? I always encourage you, if you have other feedback for Gabe, please send it to him, email to him. He's always available as well. So thank you for your update.
Thank you.
I think the council would still like to see for some of these items, the details that we've requested.
Sure.
You know, ordinance is, is a good example.
Yeah, I took a lot of good notes, and I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving forward, we're now back to the original item number six. So at seven thirty-four, we're in a public hearing. Consideration of Public Hearing on Proposed Budget for Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Two Thirty-Three. For that, Gabe Bream and Kim Quinn. Who wants to go first?
Mayor and Council, nothing to add to our presentations, other than I do want to recognize our staff. So as you recall, we start the budgeting process very early, probably earlier than any city around. We start having these discussions back in March. You may recall some of those discussions. They become clear as we get, come closer to decision time. So I'm really proud of our proposed budget, what we've put forward for you. We have no formal presentation. Kim is here to answer any questions you might have, as well as a number of our, our staff that could answer specific questions.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. One thing I'd like to know, I was looking at the July monthly report, and one of the things that stood out to me, there was a comment made in an email about possibly shutting down recreation activities to save money. One of the things that I had requested at the same time, when we had talked about what can we cut, is what can we do to increase revenue in the city, and I didn't see a lot of feedback in that respect. We talked about the food truck park. What can we do to bring money, start charging these people? Because we haven't been charging them for two years. I also see food truck parks all over the city, or food trucks all over the city. Are we doing anything about those, or do they just park there for free, and the city gets no benefit from them? That may be something that we need to look at. One of the things...
If I may answer again, as I stated earlier, my recommendation to you is the proposed budget, which maintains existing services.
And we did adjust the proposed budget somewhat. If you recall, I can't remember which council meeting it was, but we identified about sixty thousand dollars, and that was increasing the rental registration fees. We increased garage sale permits for more than what we had proposed. We added switchyard fees. There's a schedule that's additional fifteen thousand dollars that wasn't in the proposed budget that we've adjusted. And then there was an adjustment made after the budget was proposed for emergency management, so there's an increased expense there, which half of it will come from Lake Worth. And that was, those were the changes through the August twenty-second workshop, and that generated the fifty-nine thousand. We had the discussion on, did you want to reduce the tax rate by that? I think there was discussion about maybe using it for one of the animal services programs, and we talked about maybe using it for street supplies. Those are the things that come to my mind that were being talked about. And then after that, we did take a look at the budget and looked at ways that we couldn't, we wouldn't have to reduce services, and that's where those next three come in. I just took a better look at our revenue estimates for next year, and we had the benefit of having Aquatic Center and just taking a look at the rec center, since we haven't had a regular program for a couple of years. So I adjusted those revenues up by forty-two thousand. And then I also looked on the expense side at the rec center, and so we aren't having as many programs as we have had in the past for two reasons. First of all, the programming hasn't gotten back up to speed after COVID, and second of all, two of the large spaces are being used by the senior center, so that, you know, we can't have as many programs. So I went ahead and reduced the expense side by what we would normally pay the instructors that would come in and do those programs, which wasn't as part of the proposed budget. And then we also added, I think this was your recommendation, council member Big Horse, a senior membership fee for non-residents. That's a small amount, but that was still twenty-five hundred dollars. So that's where we came up. I think this was what Gabe sent out last, the positive operating imbalance of about a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars.
We could apply that to the tax rate?
You, it's, it's a positive operating imbalance, so yes, sir, you could reduce the tax rate.
By how much?
That would be a tax rate of fifty point eight zero four two cents. So it would be twelve dollars and thirty-seven cents less per year than what was originally in the proposed budget.
Is that a half a cent? What is that? Reduction of what?
It is...
A little more than half a cent?
About half a cent, yeah.
That's about a month. You know, you, you get the twelve-month free with that, and that's, that's great. One of the things that I was looking at in the July report, and this is what I was leading up to, is that I noticed that it's on the miscellaneous general fund. It's a hundred and fifty-eight pages. This is labeled page one, but it's not that. Let me see if I can find it. The recreation slash aquatic, and it has an M on it. I'm not sure what that means, but the year budget, and this is for revenue, money coming in, correct? Was estimated at five thousand dollars. For June and July, for the year, they collected over twelve thousand dollars, and that's a two hundred and forty percent.
That's recreation miscellaneous, and that was what I just mentioned, that I went back and took a look at the revenues, and we've increased the revenues by forty-two thousand in the next year's proposed budget. So we had, it was difficult estimating exactly where we would be, like I said, because we had almost two years of no recreation programs.
I understand. And then the next line item is the aquatic day pass. You had no estimated budget for that, but for two months, again, we're looking at fifty-five thousand dollars. I mean, that's tremendous, and I don't know who's doing that work, but we need to keep them.
Yeah, we, again, we estimated overall revenues for the rec center at about two hundred and fifty thousand. In prior years, we were collecting almost five hundred, so we readjusted. And not only did we adjust downward, but the reason that we've got all of those new line items that you don't have any historical for, was to help the rec center track what different types. So instead of lumping it all into one account, which we've had in the past, and so it's going to take a few years to get good at estimating those particular line items.
I understand, but I'm just saying, I mean, this, this is phenomenal that the rec center has been able to do that. And I think this shows the creativity of the staff that we have here in Saginaw. And, you know, I don't know if you have an incentive program for the employees, which I think would, might be something that we need to look at, is if you can find ways to save, you know, a thousand dollars or more, they should be rewarded for that, if they can exceed their budgets. I mean, this is something that we need to, I don't know, but anything that we can do to try to help our citizens. And I understand what you're saying, Gabe, about, you know, this is what the citizens agreed to, but the citizens don't have a crystal ball, and you know as well as I do, my husband is a magician. He, his crystal ball is a gimmick. Nobody knew that we were going to be facing these expenses, and I know the city has to meet theirs as well, but we can't be a burden to the citizens just to keep things running at a hundred percent when our citizens are functioning at seventy percent. So I applaud the rec center, you know, just looking at this one page for what they've done. You know, it's great.
It's good information. Generally speaking, recreational services, nothing we do, we, we don't charge fees to make a profit in the city. We try to recover our costs. So recreational services, we try to recover cost, except in the aquatic center. We don't recover our costs. I think we're about, was it sixty thousand short? Forty-five thousand? Again...
Was that because of the stuff we had to fix?
I don't have an estimate of where we're going to end up the year. I'm going to work on that after we get our budget approved. I've been behind schedule a little bit on that. But yeah, I'm, I'm sure that there's going to be a loss, and the estimate was about sixty thousand.
And again, these are, we do this not to make money, but it's an amenity.
It is.
And so to, if the idea is, and I appreciate our staff, that we need to generate more revenue through recreational services, the reality is, it's not going to happen. It's not going to close, you know, the, the gap in taxes that have increased because the city council issued bonds. So we do well in a good year to cover our costs in recreational services.
So the next item that I was going to ask about is the farmer's market, since they've done so well, according to this paperwork, with the rec and aquatic centers, and they're generating money. We're generating money from the food truck park now.
A lot, thanks to our recs there.
Why can't we just have the staff, you know, the lady that, the lady that handled the pool is seasonal. I've, I've seen what she's done at the pool, which, with her sensory programs that she's had on Saturday. Those have been successful. You know, I'd like to keep her on. I mean, she's got some great ideas. I don't see why she couldn't handle the farmer's market, and we could make some revenue off of that, and her job could basically pay for itself.
So I may defer to council member Lawson. We had this discussion about the Community Link contract. We contract with Community Link, using our hotel occupancy taxes, which are restricted. They operate a farmer's market to the benefit of the community. They do that at a cost that we could not compete with doing it with our own staff. I had this discussion with council member Lawson. We get a heck of a deal. The reason I think they're able to do it at less than cost is that they use a lot of volunteers, which, you know, we can't tell employees, hey, volunteer to run the, the farmer's market. We have to pay them. So, you know, many things we recommend to you are business decisions. Council member Lawson, you want to discuss that? We, we've had this discussion a few times.
Yeah, the, I think the rub is here is whether or not the staff can absorb that extra. Do we have the right staff, and can they absorb it now? Or do we have to hire somebody to come in and do it? If we have to hire somebody, you can't do it. When you calculate out, what do we cost to hire a person?
Have you asked the employees that are there now if they felt like they could do it?
Yeah, I mean, the rec center's open on Saturday.
You don't get an answer unless you ask a question, so if you ask your employees if they might want to do it, they might want to.
So we can do anything.
They're creative people.
We can do anything you ask of us, but let's keep in mind that if we ask Vicki, or Ashton, or someone, hey, your farmer's market manager, Ashton, that means everything you do, including swiping my card when I, I go work out a few times a week, get all really sweaty, and no one makes fun of me when I'm leaving. Thank you for that. That takes away from work they're already doing. So there's a cost to everything for every staff effort. Could it be done? Yes. Could it be done as inexpensively as Community Link provides the service? I don't believe so.
But we would have revenue to back that up.
You would have revenue, but you would have increased costs because of that. Does that make sense?
If we have to hire a new person, it's more than we pay them, and it's, we pay benefits, all that good stuff, and it's a big number.
With the feral cat program, they were talking about hiring two and a half people.
That's not in the proposed budget. That's for discussion purposes.
It was a discussion purpose.
Correct. Everything comes at a, that is a great point. So if we add new programs...
So I would let go of the feral cats if you wanted to hire somebody to do the farmer's marketing.
Well...
I'm just saying.
So, so... Council members, that's a great point. We can do new programs, if that is your desire. They all come at a cost. So if we do senior transportation, if we do the city is the staff person for the Chamber of Commerce, that takes staff time. And again, the proposed budget, we propose to maintain existing services. We may go back in the future and recommend to you to add on new services, which will come at a cost.
All right, so other, I do have one request to speak on this item number six as well. If Jennifer would want to come up here at this point. I didn't want to forget you, so...
Okay, I'm Jennifer Bligh, and I was asked to step in late in June to the aquatic center, and I've loved working in Saginaw for at least fourteen years as a vendor, and I loved it even more as an employee. This is my favorite spot to be, and I can make that clear. We've worked with many, many cities.
Can you work, talk in that microphone so they can hear you out there?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So I've worked with lots of cities, and as soon as I came out to Saginaw several years ago, I said, this is it. This is the only city I want to work in. This is the environment I love. I prefer it over other cities, and that's my personal choice. So when I was asked to take over, I was all in, and I stepped away from my own company to make sure there was no conflict of interest for the city. I wanted to protect the city. I wanted to protect the aquatic center. And as I loved it even more, there was a chance that it could become a year-long aquatic coordinating position in whatever that looked like. And so I stepped away from my teaching position. I am all in. I am all in. I was very fortunate to inherit a glorious staff. I was able to keep all of them throughout the summer. We only, we didn't close for any rain days once I took over, not even this storm. We delayed, and we were still open. And we did have one weekend. When school started and the kids went back to school and back to college, there was one weekend when I was a few short, and I just couldn't feel good about opening the pool. And so we chose to err on the side of caution and safety and not open. It was a very difficult decision, but it was the best thing to do for the city and the public. We have added pro- We have added programming. I did immediately bring in sensory programming, adaptive programming. I've always accommodated adaptive in swim lessons to the degree that I was able to, and I had already started working with the front desk at the rec to come up with a way to judge how many people coming in are going to need adaptive services, because that changes my staffing requirements. And so I would love to expand on that. We brought in the sensory nights, and I have had people come in from as far as South Irving to come in, and a lot of South Lake and Trophy Club and other places, Fort Worth and Lake Worth, to come, because this is desperately needed. Our special needs and adaptive community, especially in this area, are completely ignored. They are very, very underserved. I was on the phone today with someone who's asking me to become a vendor for the children's blind services, blind and vision impaired services, and they would like for me to offer aquatics as well as other programming, which they would fund, and I would love to bring that here if at all possible. We did expand our aquatic season for adults and seniors, and we've added a fourth session. It's a mini-session. It's a shorter session, because in September, that water just gets colder and colder, but we did expand it, and it's going on for two weeks. It's been very well received. We also added an aquatic program for adults in the mornings on Saturdays. It's been very well received, and it will be its own standing class next season to generate more revenue, separate from the water aerobics. I would like to bring in other adaptive programming as well. I'm out of my own time. This weekend, I do have an event coming up that is for, kind of, it's a, it's a McLaury meetup of special needs families. I've been putting out feelers for a few weeks. I've gotten responses from Richardson, people in Richardson, South Lake, and beyond, asking if they can come even though they don't live in Saginaw, that they would want to participate, that they would drive this far to get adaptive programming, and I would love to be able to offer it. I am a special needs parent, and I know how badly that community is needed. The parents need each other. They need each other, and Saginaw is in a perfect position to create that hub for them. It's a perfect spot to serve, I was thinking Tarrant County, but I've got people in Richardson asking if they can drive out. So it's just very, very needed. I've met with families and come up with plans that would be amazing, and so I would love to just get us together and try to come up with the type of program they're really craving and really looking for, but mainly they're looking for community. And Saginaw is a perfect place for special events and community. It really is. You have a very charming, lovely city, and I would love to be a part of it. Let's see, as far as an year-round aquatic coordinator, I'm asking you to consider it, and I know that you have very, very heavy decisions to make today, and I would not want to carry the weight of these decisions. I don't envy you in these things. I am asking you to consider a year-round aquatic coordinator position, in whatever that looks like. Standard operating procedure would be, in February, I would begin to recruit staff and set up training and set up events and just set up the schedule. I would like to expand our rental opportunities in the aquatic center next year to generate more revenue, to attract more. As far as maintenance of the pool, it really does require someone there year-round, so that it doesn't have such a huge uptick in operating cost when you try to clean it up and get it ready for the spring. You need someone there, and right now, the rec would have to walk away from what they're doing to keep up with it, to monitor repairs, to monitor anything that needs to be done, maintenance, and it's all, it is all costly, and he's right, it comes from somewhere. So I am asking you to consider it. I'm asking you to. I love this. Adaptive programming is my passion. I love this city. I'm a small-town girl. I know the budget is big, and you have big decisions, so I just felt like I wanted to express that. I do have plans for adaptive programming and other rental proposals that could generate more money, and I'm happy to expand on that at a future meeting, but I just wanted to come here and humbly ask. Thank you so very much for hearing me.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Sorry, yeah, not letting you go that easy. So, I mean, you definitely, I don't know, definitely tweaked my interest. I mean, anytime we can provide services, and definitely services to the needy is good. So, I mean, what I'd really like is, I mean, you mentioned some words I'm not familiar with, that you're, you know, unless you're talking about adaptive programming, then I know, okay, but I don't think we're talking the same thing. But if you could write up some stuff and explain what it is and the benefits of it.
I would love that.
And then, you know, I was sitting there, as you're saying that, I know that, that the, our staff, Dana moved heaven and earth to get the water park open.
They worked so, so hard.
And I know that some of them spent like, you know, you know, probably 70, 80 hours a week there for a while trying to, well, not trying, they actually did it.
Holidays, birthdays.
And, you know, right, I mean, you know, and I remember us sitting up there, and we, you know, we heard that, you know, well, Keller's bad, and Dana and I, and we're like, well, okay, well, you just got to beat Keller, you just got to beat original hills, that's all you got to do. I mean, we reapplied pressure, I know we did, I did, you know, and, you know, we got you. So it, to some extent, worked. So really, I'd, it'd be good to put together a thing to say, okay, if we bring on a full-time person, here's the other amenities we can, we can bring this is in Saginaw, and then, how would that help the rec center? How would that bring you all down to a reasonable work level? And then add that in to preventative maintenance. I mean, instead of letting every year for three or four months, the, you know, our very expensive and very costly water park, if you will, just sit there and corrode, we had somebody actually doing preventive maintenance and taking care of it. How much is that going to save us on the back end?
Right.
Is there any way, Gabe, we can put something like that together and, you know?
Yeah, so certainly, we didn't add any new positions this year. Happy to provide that information. Would love it if Jennifer, you know, could, could go full-time at some point in the future. Several of Randy's folks have received training to be, is it CPO, Certified Pool Operators, so that we have a pretty deep bench of available people to keep up with the day-to-day activities of the pool, chemicals, maintenance.
We've been certified together.
There's a, yeah, there's a number of punch list items that Public Works and contractors will come back and finish up due to the damage from the storm.
Yes, and I'm currently working on my certified pool inspector as well.
So you had talked about raising revenue. Could you just kind of give us a ballpark idea of how much revenue you think you could generate for the city?
I don't have actual numbers yet. I need to research that, and that's why I wanted to.
Would it be enough to, you think you could offset your job?
I do. I do. I would like to upgrade the way that we do pavilion rentals and have additional rental options there at the pool. I would like to have other programming, junior lifeguarding program, things that people would pay into to participate in, that would also create future lifeguards for my pool. My current lifeguards and the lifeguards that I've worked with in the, in the past, their whole thing was, they came to day camp at the rec, they swam at the pool, they saw the lifeguards, they were able to be involved, and their dream, their goal was to turn 16 and to get certified and work at the pool. And I would love to bring that back. I would love to bring back, to bring that back, to look into bringing the kids' nights in the rec as part of that as well, if, you know, as soon as we have staffing, that can, that can allow for that, and I know that all of these things take time.
They do take time, and they do take money, but I mean, if there's a chance that this could zero out.
Yes.
I mean, that's definitely considering.
I would love to bring in adaptive programming and adaptive swimming lessons, like what the Blind Services is asking me to do, and they would pay for that, and they would supply equipment and things like that.
So there are grants available for these types of programs?
There are grants available for those types of programs, and I'm already researching how to utilize them best, and as well as, you know, programs we can do with, you have a very large population of special needs and disabled adults, and once they've aged out of the school program, no one really thinks, where do they go? What happens to their parents? And I know what I'm hearing right now is that they have to quit their jobs to be with them, and they don't have any sort of respite, and they don't have, some of them, their kids are functional, and they want to be productive, and they want to be part of the community, and so things like your beautification committee and things like that, we could definitely be involved in and save money here and there just by helping and volunteering and being a part of the city, which I would love to be involved with.
And where is the next closest city that offers these sensory and adaptive programs?
There are other cities that offer these nights, but they're literally just, they're typically not a program. They're, they're pay-to-come-in to the pool. We did change things for the adaptive night. We lowered the sound level, and the guards were very particular about whistles and things like that. We adapted it for them, gave swimming tips and things like that. They don't offer adaptive swim lessons. They don't. That is something that they do not offer, and I accommodate in our swimming program, and I would love to expand that, but I would have to have the ability to do that and staffing to do that.
So in other words, your lifeguards are also acquiring new and important skills that most lifeguards would never receive anyplace else?
They are. Oh, absolutely, they are. Yes, they absolutely are. They are.
Interesting.
Most of them are involved in pals at school, and they're part of the special needs community in that way, and so they jump at the bit to be able to come and be there for sensory nights, and they've expressed interest in volunteering for sensory programming inside the rec, if I could make it happen.
Well, since Mayor Paul Tim.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we could come back mid-year, I think, and we could verify some of those costs and make sure, certainly need to make sure that grants would cover the cost, because otherwise, again, an addition in ongoing expenses takes tax rate capacity. Let's think of it that way. But I'd be happy, you know, working with Jennifer, with Kim, we can talk to some of these other programs and get you a cost where you can make a decision, maybe mid-year.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't we get some information, take some time, and then maybe we can bring forward this for discussing a mid-year adjustment?
Yeah.
And that we'll have all the data and the dollars.
Happy to do that.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jennifer. Well, we're still in a public hearing. I have another request here. Carmen, do you want to speak on this one? It's the same as number eight, still tax stuff, so. You said eight, but six, we're still talking the budget, or the tax rate. What do you want to talk about?
What I want to talk about is, I, I'm for it. I mean, I understand that it's my, I'm going to pay a little bit more, but to me, it is the utmost important for me, when I go at home, when I'm at home, that if I call night, when I call the Saginaw Police Department or the Fire Department, they are there like this. And they, these guys, these people deserve a raise. They really do. They're underpaid, and to me, if that means cutting out some type of special event, go ahead and do that, because I think most residents think that the safety, you know, we go to sleep, I go to sleep, like most of us, with the, well, you know, if something happens, this is not Fort Worth, somebody will be there within five, 10 minutes. And to me, that's very important, and if that means increase, so these fine guys and women and men who are here to protect me, and also make sure that the potholes, whatever, get fixed, all the general employees, then I'm all for it. Because I know it has to come from, I mean, if that means I have to spend $20 less on McDonald's, or when I go out, so be it. I'm, so I'm for it. I know that's not probably, very popular, but I'm for it. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much, Carmen. Appreciate that. All right, so we are still in a public hearing on proposed budget. That means anyone in the audience can speak. You don't have to follow a form. If you would like to speak at this point on the budget, you're welcome to. Anybody. All right, then at eight, oh, Mr. Pete, you want to come? You sure? All right.
I set it up on.
Okay. And then at 8:03, I'll take us out of the public hearing. Now we're moving to item number seven. So there's an action regarding resolution 2022, adoption of budget fiscal year 2023-23. Gabe, Ray, and Kim, plan.
Mayor and Council, the recommendation is the proposed budget with the few changes that Kim reviewed earlier. I'm happy to answer any questions, and again, want to recognize our staff. This is six-plus months. We, we work in formulating this. There's a lot that goes on behind the seats. Can do it without them, so thank you.
Other question, and Kim, tell me what the tax rate would be now? You just said it.
If you want to include all of the changes that we just discussed, you'd have a positive operating imbalance of just under 149,000. The proposed tax rate could be 50.8042. And if you're, if that is the desire of Council, then the wording on item, on item nine would need to be, which is effectively a 15.54 percent increase.
So seven, this is item number seven, so what is the resolution? We're just approving this.
The resolution is just adopting, approving the proposed budget, and it would be proposed budget as modified.
Essentially, it's a one, two, three-step process. Any questions on this? On number seven, item number seven, budget, a tax rate of 50.8042. If not, I will entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Does this 5% across the board raise include the city manager as well?
It includes all, per contract, includes all city employees.
Because we, we determine Gabe's raise.
We did, and we talked, I asked Bryn about this last year, and he said, yes, per, and you, or Frisk may be answering, yes, per the contractor, per the agreement with the city manager, he would be entitled to any raise that's given to all city employees. And I think that's a correct statement. That's what Bryn told me earlier this year when we discussed this.
That's correct. I verified with Bryn, so I'm entitled personally to any cost of living adjustment than any other employee is entitled to.
That's correct, Mayor. Okay. Thank you. All right, other questions on item number seven? If not, I'll entertain a motion, just to approve this resolution.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve resolution number 2022-20.
Thank you, Mayor. A second? Do I have a second? Oh, Paul. Thank you, sir. I started to see you. All right, let's vote. So item number eight.
May I say something real quick?
Sure.
I would like to commend the staff on the reductions that they were able to find, and I hope that those do continue throughout the year, that they don't have to spend the full budget.
Thank you, Cindy. So item eight, consideration action to ratify the property tax rate increase reflected in fiscal year 2022-23 proposed budget. Again, Gabe and Kim. This is eight.
This is just a, the next step, you have to ratify it before you, after you adopt the budget and before you adopt the tax rate.
So there is, there is no special language on this one, right?
No.
So, any questions on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to ratify.
Mayor, I move that we ratify ordinance number 2022-14.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Paul. Let's vote. It's so hard for me not to raise your hand. Let's ratify. All right, thank y'all. All right, item number nine, consideration action regarding ordinance number 2022-14, adopting and setting the property tax rate for 2022 tax year. Gabe and Kim again.
This will just set the tax rate to partially fund the budget that you just approved. This is the, this is the, this is the item that requires the specific language when making the motion.
The language is at the bottom of item number nine, right?
That's correct.
So whoever makes this motion, you see what it says down there?
It has to change the tax rate.
Right. Instead, instead of the .513719, it would be .508042, and the percentage would be 15.54 versus the 16.83.
All right, so that is item number nine, consideration action regarding the ordinance for setting the tax rate. So I will entertain a motion on item number nine with all the language.
Mayor, I make a motion, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .508042, which is effectively a 15.54 percent increase in the tax rate.
Do I have a second? Thank you, gentlemen. Let's vote. Most best employees, you got a raise. Congratulations. We appreciate y'all's hard work.
Y'all all deserve the raise.
And I know y'all stayed around too, so now y'all can leave.
That's 60.
I can say, I bet that place is full, isn't it? All right, that's nine. Item number 10, service action regarding order number 2022 dash 15, water and wastewater sewer rate, rates. For that, Gabe and Kim again.
Mayor and City Council, these are just all of the rates that are included as part of the proposed budget. I will mention that we will have to take separate action on the $1 increase in the drainage utility fees. That requires a 30-day notice and three advertisements, so we'll come back in October with an ordinance on that. But all of the other fee increases that we've discussed throughout the spring and summer are included in this master fee table.
The council questions?
And what dollar value are we looking at going up for water and for wastewater?
Sorry, I thought we were on the master fee table and not the water and sewer.
Or number 10.
Am I on the wrong one?
No, you're on the right one.
No, it was me that was wrong.
That's the first and only time Kim Quinn has ever been wrong.
That's not true.
It's hard to stop her, that's for sure.
So the, the average homeowner will see an increase of $5.60 a month for the water and sewer combined.
Someone again, and people that are in the crowd are watching, that's because our raw water cost and treatment cost from Fort Worth has increased. We're just passing it through.
Other questions on wastewater, water and wastewater?
Does the city have any, the city of Saginaw have any say about our supplier changing these rates? We just have to take it?
Yeah, no.
They have a rate study committee to consider these rates because the city have represented their adjusted.
Who's our rep on that committee now? You? Okay, good. Excellent.
We got the best.
There you go. All right, other questions on this, Council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the ordinance 2022 dash 15.
Charlie second it? Cast your votes. Motion passes. Thank you, y'all. Thank you, Quinn. Item number 11, consideration action regarding approval of ordinance 2022 dash 16, amending the master fee schedule. Kim, Kim Quinn.
And that's the one I just described.
Okay.
One question that I had asked earlier during the budget part. These food trucks that we see around town that are not part of the switchyards, are we charging them any sort of fees? And can we add that to this schedule?
That would be a Keith question.
We, we talked about this last time, and we got told.
I think it would be fair if a food truck is parked at a public facility that we charge the fee, whether that's the rec center or certainly the switchyard. You're paying a day rate, but Keith?
Yes, we can, we can control the, at least our staff, the food trucks that are at the food truck park. And also, we've had some, because of the success and the number of people that are at the aquatic center and the rec center, we've had some that are there, and we can control and schedule those. The ones that randomly show up around town, we, we can't necessarily do that, because we really, you know, our staff can't drive around and just patrol everything. We do have, you know, I get, I'm assuming if, that those, well, let me back up. The food trucks that come to the food truck park and at the rec center and aquatic center, before they're even allowed to do that, they have to get a permit through our building department. If, if a random truck just drives into town and parks wherever the heck they want to, we don't necessarily know that.
Do we have an ordinance against that? I'm sorry, I couldn't.
So we do permit those trucks, and we just start, we start a new safety program too, that's going to help out a lot of these trucks coming in, that we know a little more about how safe they operate. We also, we're basically going to give us a sign, you know, where we're going to be and where's the time we're going to be there. It's a maximum six hours, and that's okay.
And it's eight hours a day at the switchyards?
Well, I, I think we're two separate issues, but if I'm understanding you correctly, if a food truck is at the switchyard or a public facility, I would recommend, I think your recommendation is to charge the fee. Is that correct?
If, we have a food truck in the city limits.
Well, so if a food truck is on private property, we would not charge a fee.
Like Polito's of Walmart or Polito's or something.
They have to have a permit, but we don't charge a fee for operation.
Around, like up there by Polito's.
Yeah.
There's a permit fee, but we don't charge a daily fee to set up a food truck.
But the question is, do we have an ordinance that allows them to park anywhere?
Even if they're permitted, or only if they're permitted?
Yeah, if it's on private property, yeah, they can operate on private property.
No matter, no matter what, they have to be permitted, right?
That's correct.
So, I mean, that's the food, food safety.
You mean, like, like a private business can have a food truck come in anytime they want to?
That's correct. Yeah.
As long as it's permitted.
Right.
As long as it's permitted, okay. And what about the hookup fees over at the switchyards? Do we charge for that as well?
At first, we did not, because we were trying to get people in there. We had the, if you remember us talking, you know, we were, and I've said it before, we, we were begging food trucks to come in.
Right.
And now they're begging us. That's why we've got them at the.
And it's a good problem to have.
Two, two meetings ago, we actually, I, I thought we all agreed that we would start charging them at the, at the.
The switchyard.
At the switchyard. Is that not correct?
Well, we had, we had to get them on the fee schedule first before we can charge them.
Have to get them on what?
We have to get them on the fee schedule first before we can charge them.
Okay.
But we are charging them for the hookups, correct?
Just like you said, we, we can't charge a fee unless it's in the fee schedule. We love to make things up, but we can't do that. And we don't really want to do that either.
No.
We don't want to get into that. Unless it's in the fee schedule, if it's not in the fee schedule, then we can't do anything about it.
When does it take to get it on the fee schedule?
That's what we're talking about.
That's what we're doing right now.
So, yeah, our permit fee is $150 a food truck, correct, for a year? $250. And that $250 a food truck can operate anywhere in the city. We would add an additional a day rate and utility hookup only for food trucks that connect to the switchyard or a public facility. I think that's what we're proposing.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
But if it's a food truck that does not hook up to the public facilities, we don't charge them? Or do we charge them?
If it's a private business, we do not charge them. If it's on, if it's on city facility, at the food truck park, at the city hall parking lot, at the rec center, the, the rates that are in the fee schedule are what we are proposing, $25 a day. If it's a Thursday, a Sunday through a Thursday, and $40 a daily fee for a Friday, Saturday, holiday, or special event, a weekly fee, they can, they can pay $135, or if they want to pay for a whole month at one location, it's $450. That's the proposed fee schedule.
Right. But does that, and I, I was gone all weekend, and I just read this last night, and I had all of this last night and this morning. But does that include the hookup fees, or is that a separate line item?
There is no discussion about charging an additional hookup fee. This would be the total cost, is my understanding.
But you're saying you're charging them 40 bucks to hook up, right? That's what that means. To sit there at the food truck park and hook up, 40 bucks, right?
And if they're not hooked up, it's still 40 bucks?
As it's written, yes.
Yeah, if they're at a public facility, then yes.
With this, with this amended fee schedule, hook up or not, it's 40 bucks?
40 bucks.
Okay. And is that going to be enough to cover our expenses?
Right.
What about overnight storage? Some of these trucks and trailers, they end up parking them there overnight, and it's not supposed to end it?
They're not supposed to.
But if they want to, could we add that to the fee schedule, again, to generate more revenue?
Like over the weekend?
Overnight storage in the park, I think there's, and having had parks hasn't been in my department for a while, but I believe there's a, a ordinance where the people have to be out of the park by like 11 o'clock. So what, unless you have a food truck park police officer that patrols, I know Vicki's not volunteering for that, but normally, if, I'm assuming, I guess Russell could probably, or Chief Raggsville could follow up on this. If, if there's somebody parked in the park, the patrol officers that are patrolling at that time, and they see that, they may approach that vehicle, I'm guessing.
It's not a may, it's a guaranteed. We find people in the park after hours, we make contact with all of them, advise them of the park hours, and ask them to leave.
And what happens if that vehicle's unattended? Is it towed?
It is subject to being towed. We use that as a last resort, so we'll leave a tag on the vehicle and check back on it several times throughout the night. Normally, what you find is someone parks there as they walk to a residence or whatever, probably a boyfriend, come back to the car, and they leave, see the notice on it, and they're gone. If we happen to see them, then we run them for warrants, again, do our due diligence on why they're in the park after hours.
All right, before I forget, I do have a request to speak on this item. Ms. Stewart, you ought to come up.
Yes. On number 10, it talks about the, the fees, and I'm asking, and I think Vicki, oh, Vicki's here. How do we, if somebody, let me see, if somebody rents the community center, and they are a Saginaw citizen, but they're actually doing it for so-and-so's cousin, when they show up at the, when they open up or at the rec center, do y'all check to see that that person that is getting the city rates is there?
We have started doing that.
Okay.
What we do is we require a water bill at the time of rental.
Right.
And because people were renting for people outside the city, the attendant that's on, that is doing the party, will check ID, will take a copy of driver's license, and a copy of the water bill. So when the attendant shows up to unlock the door, we tell them that your primary or secondary person has to be there, but we don't unlock the building. Because as we go through the rules for the building, and we tell the person renting, if they're renting for cousin so-and-so, then we get told, well, nobody told me. Well, that's because you weren't there paying the rental fee, giving the resident rate.
Okay, okay. And why are we decreasing anything at the rec center?
What are we decreasing?
Well, I, what I've got is, this is at the rec center, per hour for two rooms at the Saginaw, they're decreasing it by $20. They're in, I don't understand. Is, is it because we need more renters?
I didn't know we were decreasing anything.
The, well, that was part of the recommended fee study when the management analysts did it, and it was just for a residential, a resident.
Decreased for residents only.
$20.
Not for non-residents.
Right.
Right. Well, the non-residents is increasing, but I just thought, why are we decreasing it? It was just.
I know, because it's pretty cheap for residents even.
Well, we talked in the past about fees for residents, because they're already paying taxes for this. So you sort of double, double whammy. That's part of it, maybe?
Okay.
I believe that was the only decrease.
The, and then down here, yeah, they were both at the rec center for residents. So I was just curious.
We want to charge residents something just so they'll show up and take, and take care of it.
Yeah.
But we don't want to charge them exorbitant fees, because they already pay taxes for it. That's sort of in their taxes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Other questions, other questions for fee schedule?
I do.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
You know, with the facility rentals, I know a lot of times, pavilions and things in the park are being used, but they're never rented. People just find them empty, and they start using them. Is there any way that we could monitor that? You know, it's a question that I'd asked before, and we didn't have any good solutions at that time. And also, the second part is, you know, the cleanup. You know, with Kelly, we go to the community center, and we find a lot of things that people have done that they're not supposed to do when they rent these facilities, and that puts more on our staff for cleanup. I know we talk about keeping their deposit, but is that deposit enough to cover the expense to the city?
Another way we can increase the cleanup is the facility is only being serviced by janitorial service for, I think it's like, it's either five days, five days a week or four days a week, not necessarily Monday through Friday, but total of five days. If we increase that amount by adding those additional days where it's every single day, we can do that. It's, there's just a cost to do, from the, from the company to do that.
But is the, is that cost, if it takes, let's say it's a $50 deposit, and it's $250. We have a party room at our warehouse for our birthday parties and things, and most of the people are good, but about once or twice a year, we have somebody that comes in, and they leave a horrific mess. And it takes us a good hour or two to clean up after them. It's a lot more than $50 deposit that we ask. Is that money applied back to the renters?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you exactly what the deposit is. 100? I have no problem increasing the, the deposit on that. A problem that we have is that somebody rents the, the facility, we have a deposit, and we have a rental attendant that attends. They don't set up any tables, they don't set up any chairs, they just, here's, here's where they are, right over here. Okay. They just say, here's where it is, and then we ask them, we ask the renter to pay for a building attendant to be there. And part of their job is that, but also part of their job at the end of the night is to say, hey, you know, now it's time, you need to start cleaning up. And our staff do not do the cleanup, the renters do. And there's some staff that, or not staff, there's some renters that, how do I say, just kind of say, no, we're not doing that. And then they walk out. And then our staff gets stuck doing that. So I have no problem increasing the deposit. It's, might encourage some of the wonderful people that rent.
I've heard this now several times, definitely with, with this center, and that people's going in there, they're, they're damaging the city's property, basically, is what they're doing there. They're renting it, they're not treating it with respect, and, and, you know, this is the public's actual property. So it's, we're here as stewards to make sure that it's properly taken care of. So, over the last year, how many deposits have we kept? How many, how many times has this been damaged? I mean?
But on the spot, I couldn't tell you exactly. I can get that information for you.
Yeah.
Because I, I don't track that every, every single day, but I could, we can certainly get that for you.
I know that I've rented at other cities outside parks and stuff, and they take my bag on credit card. And they make it very clear that if I don't clean it up and, you know, leave it in the way it was found, they will charge me accordingly. And I know over in Eagle Mountain, not over South Lake, over by South Lake, that park over there, that's the way they do it.
I'm all for that. We had, for the longest time, our community center and what was the senior center, we didn't have rental attendants, and people took advantage of that. And the fire department would tell you the bottles of things that they found sitting around. And, and we started implementing the rental attendant to be there to try and patrol that as best they could. If they had too much trouble, they called our PD.
Yeah. I mean, so, so, yeah, we need to, we need to.
Believe on that, our renters aren't always nice people.
Oh, I know.
That's why we have a police department. I mean, they do. I mean, they, you just call the police department, Ragsdale will take care of them, right, Ragsdale?
And I think he anxiously awaits that moment. But, I mean, you know, there are certain rules that they have listed at each facility. You know, no tape on the walls, no this, no that, no other. Is the attendant authorized to say, hey, look, let me remind you?
Oh, yeah.
And they do it anyway?
Like I said, not all the renters are wonderful people.
So can we, can I get a copy of what the rental agreement is?
Sure.
Send that to me so I can, I can.
It's posted online, but I'll get that to you.
And to me, if we're not going to enforce it, it's not worth the papers written on. So we just need to make it very clear that, you know, at some point, you know, you all pick the time.
It's not that we're not trying to enforce it, we are trying to enforce it. But when people just basically give us the finger and say, we're going to do whatever we want, and they leave, that puts us in a bad spot where we're.
You got, you got their driver's license number and everything. Why wouldn't you just, again, why wouldn't you just call Ragsdale and say, hey, this person walked out? They're basically stealing from the city at that point.
We've done that.
Actually, if I can clarify, so you're under a civil contract at that point? It's not the same as theft or anything of that nature, so they walk off on that contract. There is procedures in which to recoup costs there, but it's not through an enforcement, through law enforcement.
Get their credit card charged out. I know, I know that when, like I say, when I'm in a hotel, they take my credit card. When I'm, like I said, over there, they did it, and we just charge it accordingly. If they want to do $500 worth of damage, we charge them $500.
You know, we've got communications officer, manager, director, whatever you are, Pedro, I'm not sure. Do we keep a list of these guys? The name and addresses and things, when they, should they rent again, we're going like, mm, sorry?
We block them in our computer. With their name, whenever, if somebody comes up, we try and, or we block their, their name so they're not allowed to rent again.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure, because, I mean, again, this, this is something that we had to do at our place. It's like, no, you're never coming back.
We have that for people that have been kicked out of the facility for, if they've been banned for a year for whatever reason from the rec center, it pops up when they try and sneak back in. Or not sneak, but come in with it.
But we've had to go by address as well, not just name.
But if you kick somebody off and they come back in, that's a trespass. That is. No, you can't.
And that is correct. That doesn't happen very often. We have been present for a couple of issues at the rec center where we've had to escort people off property, but rarely do they come back when we're anywhere around.
This seems like this is an easy problem to solve.
I'm all for charging them.
Money talks. You tell them they got to pay for it, they're going to settle down.
Tell them, just charge them. I mean, tell them at the beginning, and to me, the follow-through, if they do damage, they pay.
Most of the damage that gets done is not really damage per se, where they're not punching holes in walls or destroying tables. It's, it's more of not picking up after themselves trash, or leaving tape on the wall, that's, you know, that's.
If they.
It's, they're not supposed to do it, but it's not a significant damage.
If we have, if we have to do it, figure out what the average labor rate is, it's going to cost for them, we charge them for that. If we end up having to spend five hours, and our, our labor rate, our run rate is $85 an hour, you take that times about five hours, and that's what you charge them.
So is there anything you want to make corrections to this fee schedule before we approve it? That's sort of the nuts and bolts of this discussion. We've had a lot of, a lot of things band around, do anything you want to modify to this particular fee schedule before we approve it. I guess another question is, can we modify at this point, or would we need to bring it back?
Ma'am, it's certainly a bit more comfortable coming back, because as everyone knows, these fees are set, and the costs that the city incurs before any services are studied to determine what the maximum amount of the fee can be. So if we're just sitting here spitballing about what things cost, and we just guess and put a number, I, I'd rather staff go back and do a study to determine what may be a potential addition to the fee schedule, which would be appropriate, but we can't do that tonight.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Would it be possible to approve the fee study or the master fee schedule as presented, and then come back with modifications for these specific ones? Because these, the budget, we want these to be effective October 1st.
That is precisely what I recommend, yes.
I wouldn't want it to not approve the fee schedule tonight, but discuss what we want to amend in the near future. Do we have a list of things we want to consider amending? And we talked about a few things, have we, you made any notes? Because I've been writing all this stuff down.
It, it sounds to me like it's the deposit for the, for rentals.
Okay, so we can discuss the deposit procedure, cost, whatever, and add that to the next amendment to this fee schedule? Does that sound good, plan everybody?
And there was two acts and items. One, if you can send me that contract, and send me how many people have we held their deposit on in the last year?
You'd provide that for the whole council, I'd appreciate it.
All right, so any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion on item number 11.
May I make a motion that we accept the approval ordinance 2022-16, amending the master fee schedule?
Thank you, Mayor Prokhor. Sandy Second? Castro.
Keith, we got to take a vote.
We're in, we're in.
Put that other hat on over there.
Charles said he's already voted five times, so.
Gotcha.
All right, motion passed. Thank y'all, thank you, staff. That's a lot of work, I appreciate the update. Item number 12, finish an action regarding amending the code of ordinances appendix A, a lot of other stuff, but mainly our friend Abra. Now, you got to come up, we want, we want to talk to you. You're here, you're here, it's late, Abra, come on.
I, I just want to know, what did you do to gave to him, put you all the way at the bottom?
You know, I was asking the same question.
Hey, I was, if it makes you feel better, I was on the bottom and they moved me, so, thanks for hanging around.
It's okay, I love being here. So, thanks for having me. We do have the, the presentation that I gave you last time, but I believe, you know, there were some, wanting to kind of take some more time and review some things, so happy to answer any questions tonight. Just as a reminder, you know, comp plan was approved earlier this year, so this is following that vision that we established together for neighborhood mixed use with potential ordinance amendments. It was unanimously recommended for approval by P&amp;Z. And, you know, there's, we did send, there was a couple of emails that went out. I heard from Paul, just on, I'm sorry, Phil, how did, thank you. But that, I didn't get any other feedback for any changes, so happy to go through maybe some of the things that we discussed. Definitely concerned about future cramming in of potential build-to-rent type product. So have some ideas if you want to entertain those, but, and happy to toss it to you, maybe to outline those, and we can talk through any options and any questions you have.
Couple of things that I had was the public maintenance building, storage yard, and the accessory buildings. I'd like to see those get moved to special use permit, so they just can't build whatever.
So you could, if you wanted to approve the ordinance amendments tonight, you could condition your approval to reflect that.
And if you make the motion, Paul, you can add that yourself.
I will make a motion that we will.
Well, let's, yeah, let's continue our discussion, but put that, mark that down.
All right, I got it, I got it highlighted. Abra and I spent about 20 minutes the other day.
Yep, and did you want to talk about the separation between the buildings?
Yeah, we talked a little bit about that, and I talked to Abra again tonight. And the way it's written now, the separation will only be 10 feet. I'd like to see that added, expand that to 20, so we have some more green space, because that's one of the things the residents have talked about, especially with all these cottage-style rentals and stuff that have come about. People want more green space with us. Because it was written as, was it eight units per acre? We talked about reducing that, or maybe doing a special use with that. But then it would be restrictive if we did a two-story where you retail or something on the first floor with apartments or offices on the second floor.
Yeah, so I think there's a couple of things in there, minimum separation between buildings. We discussed a potential increase to 20 feet between buildings. And then also, there was a discussion about potential reduction in density in kind of the trade-offs that go with that, and kind of what you would like to envision for these areas.
Any residential density then?
Yes.
Density?
Yeah, and can I get my slides up? Sorry. That would help.
While he's pulling the slide up, you have, under your special, a specific use permit, you have the bakery. Why would that be under that, rather than permitted uses?
So we can definitely move it, short story, but sometimes a bakery can take on not the quite the neighborhood shop front kind, they can be more of an industrial use. Depending on how they are operating their bakery, it can be a much more intense use than a neighborhood pastry shop. So it would just allow you to control the intensity adjacent to these residential areas.
Can you talk, because Internet talks about vertical neighborhood mixed use versus horizontal?
Yep.
Can you talk a little bit about that, what that would really mean in practice? Because I guess vertical is what I had in my head, but I hadn't considered horizontal. Would you discuss that?
Sure. Horizontal mixed use would basically be, you've got one property, and you've got different areas of the property operating different uses. So you could have residential in one piece, you could have retail in another piece, you could have restaurants in another piece. So we call that horizontal mixed use when you've got multiple uses on the same property, but they're not sharing the same structure. So vertical mixed use is when you have more than one use in a structure.
The difference between sharing or not sharing a structure?
Yeah. And I, there was a question earlier about the parcels. So this is kind of the, the map that we've got, but it's generally following the neighborhood mixed use designated parcels in the comprehensive plan. So this is not for consideration tonight, it's just kind of a, a look. Like that, that one up in the northeast corner, that comprises multiple parcels, but just wanted to indicate the area. And then in terms of the density, let's get some light on the subject. So currently, we've got this frontage requirement of minimum 70% of the development frontage along your major corridors, for a depth of at least 100 feet, has to be ground floor commercial. And then you could have residential in the back, and then you've got your density standards, which would be maximum eight dwelling units per acre. You could increase it to 10 if you provided some public amenities that are outlined in the proposed ordinance, and limited to two stories. So another option, as we discussed, could be to reduce the density, but still allow some residential. The more density you have, generally, the easier it can be to bring the commercial pad sites in that we're looking for, but as you know, there's trade-offs with that. I know we're very sensitive to additional dwelling units in general right now, and we really are excited about the commercial. So that's just a, a policy option for you, but to be consistent with your comp plan, as the state law requires, you really need to zone in conformance with your comprehensive plan. So if we did decide to remove residential entirely from neighborhood mixed use, that wouldn't necessarily be consistent with what the comprehensive plan outlined for neighborhood mixed use. So if you do, if you are concerned about density, I would recommend lowering it, not removing it entirely.
Because the residential brings in, developers want some residential for built-in customers, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It would be harder to get some of those developers to buy into these things.
Yeah.
But aren't most of these vacant lots, aren't they surrounded by residential?
So there's adjacent residential, but some of these lots are very big. So, you know, to program that size of lot, it's not going to be all commercial typically. So that's why we put that frontage requirement, you know, those exciting uses that we're after, the retail restaurants and entertainment uses, they're going to want frontage, but then that leaves the whole back part of the parcel, and, and what do you do with that? So from a developer standpoint, allowing them to put in some residential really helps their return on investment.
What about professional pipe buildings? Doctors' offices, that kind of stuff?
They're, they're currently proposed as allowed uses, so it's, it's up to you guys if you would like to continue that. Typically, if you're, you know, trying to program a multi-story structure, a two-story building, or an entire development, having some medical office or regular office space can help fill, fill those up. You also run into a problem of parking here because of the public transit limitations. So, you know, we're vehicle-centered, and, you know, we've got to park things. So if you put all retail restaurant in, you're really constrained by your parking requirements a lot of times. So office has a lower parking requirement.
One of the concerns I have is when we had, I believe it was called the Avillas, over off of 156 and Bailey-Boswell. The neighborhoods adjacent to that parcel of property, one of their concerns was the noise from the garbage trucks at 4:00 in the morning. This just seems kind of contrary to that concern that the people had, because now you want to put homes in the same place where you're going to put commercial, so they can listen to all the noise at 4:00 in the morning. You know, I, I don't want to get caught up in that cycle where people don't want to live there because it's too noisy, or the residents are too noisy and we can't get the commercial people in, because, you know, like Keith said, you know, some people are just not so nice. They don't, they won't want to keep up their, their homes and things. So I just see this as a potential problem, although it looks great on paper. When you start looking at human nature, you know, that's, that's a concern for me.
So to address residential compatibility, since all of these areas would be near existing residential, we've added screening of loading areas, and screening not only helps with look, but it also helps with noise and other factors that might negatively impact residential. We've also added screening of parking lots. We've added a living compatibility screen, which would require a buffer with a planted landscape strip. All of these requirements you don't have currently. So, you know, if you have a neighborhood commercial district, you know, some of these don't apply because they don't exist in the ordinance. So we're, we're proposing certain protections to mitigate any adjacent impacts of commercial uses, but we also see dumpster-related noise with multifamily, which operates kind of like a commercial use in some respects. So even if it was multifamily, we might hear dumpsters getting serviced, you know, from time to time. But usually, due to the complaints, we don't see that as often near residential areas, and it's usually some sort of route shift for a particular day that is out of the norm. But we have proposed residential compatibility standards for you this evening, so happy to look at more, or address any ideas you might have. But if you don't have, you know, commercial adjacent to these areas, then we're limiting, you know, some of the opportunities for you to bring in some of these fun things that people are asking for.
Well, people are definitely asking for commercial, especially on.
Yeah, they keep going in and out, I'm not sure.
One concern that came up in the project you mentioned, not Bailey Boswell. So, that some of these properties currently are zoned commercial, community commercial. That allows something like five stories by ride. So, this, the intent here is to lessen the impact, mitigate noise. So, you know, what is being proposed would certainly be less intrusive than the current zoning in many of these parcels, including zoning down the street of Old Decatur, which is a lot of sensitivity in light of some recently proposed projects.
Sure. We would, since that wasn't germane to the agenda item in terms of which ones we were going to be rezoning, we do have multiple illustrations, you know, that have been provided that show kind of a general location. We can look at that again tonight. Is there a concern with the number of parcels that I can maybe address?
Well, I just want to know what we have available because, you know, one of the things that the residents have talked about is green space.
Sure.
So, you know, we, we've asked for the number of parcels. While you're looking that up, you know, I'd like to see how big each of those parcels is.
So, I can kind of walk you through that with Abra, maybe Keith's help.
I'll foregive that. I mean, this, this discussion, this ordinance is really a big picture to set. This is the ordinance.
Correct.
Right.
This is not talking about any one individual property. This is talking about the big ordinance. Do we want to have this as ordinance for these? And then go apply that to individual parcels.
Right. So, a future agenda item would be, I would bring forward, we would bring forward detailed information of here's the properties that are designated neighborhood mixed use in the comprehensive plan. We can make you an exhibit for each one, whatever level of detail you're looking for. We wouldn't site plan them because that would be on the property owner. But, you know, we can, we can get any information at that time when, you know, you're ready to actually rezone properties to this designation.
So, we're not rezoning anything tonight?
No, it's just adding a new district to the zoning ordinance.
But I would expect in pretty short order after this, this gets passed, that you all come back with the ones to recommend.
Yes, sir. If that's your direction.
If we don't do that, there's no need.
Right.
And again, I, I think the most sensitive properties are the corners here of Old Decatur and McLaRoe.
Now, do the landowners have to sign off on this as well if we do the change?
I'm going to say a broad answer, and then our friendly city attorney can maybe provide more detail, but there's a standard notification process for any city-initiated rezoning. They do not have to agree. So, if they have submitted any development plans and whatnot, those would still apply. Generally speaking, broad statements at the time they were submitted. However, you know, they were, there's notification requirements in a specific process that we would need to go through. I also wanted to mention that in terms of timing. Some of these properties may need to be surveyed, which could add some time, but we would go through that with the city attorney and what level of detail we would need for that.
So, and my understanding is it would take a supermajority to do that, right? For that vote for it?
No.
Am I thinking, if the landowner does not agree?
There's certain protest procedures, I believe. Yeah.
That's correct, Mary, yes.
But only if that protest provision was enacted based on that. Yeah.
Mary?
Just to put in a good word for this zoning classification, what, what that's doing, like you explained, is just allowing us to have this as a zoning classification. And then we will look at the ones that we think would lend themselves. And the reason I like this zoning classification is number one, this is how developers are doing things nowadays. This will make those pieces of land very attractive to developers to come to Saginaw with that premium commercial retail that we're looking for. Number two, it, there is quite a few that need special use permits in this, inside of this. So, that gives us a lot of negotiation ability in there. Number three, it would not allow a developer to come in and use one piece of property for one type of development such as a single-family rent, to rent. You know, I don't have anything against that concept when it's part of a bigger concept, but when a developer comes in and wants to develop a whole piece of property with that type of product, that's what I have an objection to, and this would eliminate that. So, those are three reasons why I think this zoning classification would be a very good idea.
Mayor and Council, if I may, Keith put together a brief presentation that we sent out to you. If we could just, so, you know, we're talking a lot of these things, but pictures sort of tell the story. So, maybe if Keith can kind of show some of these products, what that actually means.
Let's work through this quickly. It's getting late.
No problem. I have a little experience with, with neighborhood mixed use development. From one, I've seen it happen in, in numerous cities all over Texas, and I don't venture out to other states that often, but I'm sure they have it there too. And also, a number of people who have implemented this in their city. She's talked a lot about what the use district is. And if you look at, and I won't let me zoom, but you can see that one picture right there. That's an example of a vertical, but it's only one story. I'll show you some more pictures in just a second. There's a lot of benefits that you mentioned, and one of the big ones is just like what Councilmember Copeland said, is it does give you a lot more control. Gives you a lot more ability to, to manage that piece of land, so much more than, than what the other, what a lot of them are currently zoned as. She's right, she's 100% right in that the developers, that's one of the things that they're looking for because you're getting not just residential, you're not getting not just commercial, you're getting both. And developers, they want, they've got to have the residents there to be able to, to move their businesses in. She mentioned earlier about the vertical. Vertical is more than one level of, of mixed use development and then horizontal. And I'll show you a picture of that here in just a second. This is a great example of Riverbend, the Yarrah Montgomery Road building in Fort Worth. And you can see that's a great use of, of an existing facility turned into a neighborhood mixed use district where you have anything from, now I don't have my glasses on, but I see an AT&amp;T store, there's restaurants down the bottom, there's a running store, there's Starbucks, there's a lot of different, different types of restaurants on that bottom level. And on the upper levels is where you have the residential. We're not Fort Worth, but a lot of places do this exact same thing, and these are all small towns. Many of them I took, I was on my way to South Texas Tuesday, and I stopped and took a picture of the one in Comanche where you can see, and you see, you see this a lot in small towns where they have the downtown square and these really old buildings from the twenties, thirties, or maybe sometimes earlier than that, that have been dilapidated. And a developer comes in and then they, they create the bottom. I didn't, I didn't take, you can see the clouds in the Comanche picture. I was also driving, and I happened to go right, so I didn't get a lot of pictures like I wanted. But you can see where they, in the bottom level of that, they have converted that, it's still commercial, but the top level, the right now, they're making that into residential. There's Quora, Texas, you can see the photos there. I drive through Brady all the time to my hometown. You can see the same thing where they have commercial on the bottom, and they're converting the residential on top. This is an example of a friend of mine in the city that I live in also, he's the Economic Development Director. They have this all over their town because there's a need and because people want it. People, they want to have this. And even our residents, if you look back to the 2018 Citizen Summit and the survey they did, the things that they asked for were comfortable pedestrian access to stores, restaurants and other businesses, encouraging social enter, or social connections and walkability. That's what these things do. This is an example of that where you can see the commercial on the bottom, and you have two floors of residential on the top. Same building, just a little bit further down, there's a, that, what's on tap is a bar, or not a bar, but it's a brew pub type of thing. You look at the photo on the right, and the other side of that, that kind of made a, almost a square around the building, there's, there's different uses, like there's eye care, there's a grocery, there's a little convenience store, the, on that corner on the right one is a barber shop. All different types of restaurants and places to eat. This isn't the same exact development, it's just new. And the residence knew this because the residents want that there. That's the type of living they want. You can see in the photo on the left, the building on the left, that's, they haven't developed the commercial yet because they hadn't got there. But they have three floors of residential townhome. The building on the right of the left picture, there's two floors. The right photo, same development, just a little bit further down. Again, commercial on the bottom, residential on the top. Within more than half mile of this whole development, you have townhomes. The houses, the photo you see on the left, you can see the townhomes there. Photo on the right is part of the park. I know because I lived about, about a half mile from that photo on the right. I don't anymore, but I did. And you can see single-family homes that were built there, zero-lot line homes. That photo earlier, those right there, the one on the right-hand photo, you see right there, right across the, the street is this, is, is commercial. It's one level, it's horizontal commercial. All within one mile, I'm sorry, one and a half mile. Right across the street from there, if you look at the same photo where it says that Tandor Walk, that's that, that's the building we were just looking at. That parking lot that you see in that little photo to the right or to the left of that, you see an Office Depot, and there's a Kroger grocery store. Everything's walkable. You can come down from your, your townhome, walk down the stairs, and within 50 yards you're at a Kroger. Photo on the right is again, same development, just more commercial. Within a half mile, this, of this same exact development is an elementary, elementary school as well as the municipal library. Also, within a half mile is the recreation center, the senior center. Within a half mile, there's entertainment options. There's NRH2O water park. On the photo on the left is actually three things. There's a minor league hockey arena, a club volleyball facility, there's three, they're all connected, and then a, and a sit-down restaurant. Now, to horizontal development, what I've showed you so far is the vertical. And the photos on the, on the left of the, the site plan that you see there is a large horizontal development. Hopefully, you can tell the colors. I'm struggling myself. The, the light green that you see right there, that's park space. The purple, kind of on the bottom part, that's single-family residential. You'll see some yellow and some kind of a light green or aqua color. That's a townhome and single-family living. The, for lack of a better term, the brown color is going to be mixed, or multifamily, they just don't have a developer for that particular spot yet. And then what looks to be, I will call it salmon, for the lack of a better term for the color, that's your commercial. Now, switch over to the photos on the right, and what you see there, you can see the flowers right there? That's that circle you see as you're coming into the development. The bottom photo is kind of a elevation of what the, what a horizontal mixed use or neighborhood mixed use development district looks like. Just one floor, just commercial. What you see there is very similar to what we have right now. Also, it's not that much different than like strip centers where you have, you know, multiple buildings in there. That, that's kind of a, kind of a look, but it's a lot more upscale, has a better presence to it. Kind of inclusion, this type of zoning for large and small is, is exactly what our residents have been asking for, is for restaurants, non-brand restaurants, having that. The development I just showed you, I could show you multiple in the, in the DFW area. This just happens to be one. They've got tons of retail, everything that you can get out and walk. It's, it's, it's as close as, closer than walking from here to the police station. It's that close to, to get to everything. I mentioned, and the mayor mentioned earlier about the, the commercial development, they need residents. And what you get with, with a neighborhood mixed use is you get both. You get exactly what they need. You have market control because there's vertical, single-story, vertical, multi-story, and then of course, horizontal. That's all I got.
What sort of information do you have on retention of both the, the businesses and the residents in these types of facilities?
Retention in terms of residential components, if they're owner-occupied or rental or?
No, people staying.
Like the commercial businesses?
Same thing with the commercial. You know, my concern is that, you know, we keep hearing it's five years before we can get a business in here. If we get these businesses, how soon is it, these buildings built? How soon can we populate them?
So, that's going to be market-driven for the most part. There's a lot of investment that goes into building, you know, this. So, a shell building where you have no tenant is very rare, especially in this economy. So, there's usually anticipated tenants in these. So, it's coming in as a, a building with three spaces. They know each of the three, or they know at least two. And, you know, there's, there's demand for that. So, Saginaw has a, a great, for these areas specifically, since they are near residential, that will help them get filled. And these all have a great frontage, except there's, there's one up there off of Bailey Boswell that is kind of an interesting case. It's kind of tucked back away, and its frontage is a bit different. So, conditioned, I've got it on the last slide, but we would recommend just letting us refine and vet some of these wording with the city attorney just a little bit more to make sure that we apply it in those really weird cases to meet the intent. And also adding that definition of development like we were talking about. So, in terms of occupancy, you know, COVID is a, a big asterisk for that. So, if you look at over the past five years, that's really going to skew the data. But in terms of what the market is building, it's very rare for something to be constructed that doesn't have a tenant already.
How long do these people stay in the apartments or in the commercial buildings? I mean, surely, I mean, since you have all the data, I mean, that's something I think that's important to us because I'd hate to build something and then not have anybody stay for any period of time.
Sure. So, I, I mean, it's, it's my understanding that the vision is to have commercial in these areas and residential at a low density. And so, that's kind, that's what we've brought forward. But in terms of, you know, how long a, a renter would stay, that depends on the type of product. And, you know, I think.
Certainly, there's some information out there so we can kind of get an idea. I mean, do they stay for 10 years, five years?
It depends on the type of product. So, if you've got rental townhomes, that type of resident who would occupy that type of product from a demographic standpoint is going to stay in those a bit longer overall. There's no way you can control kind of various circumstances. But in a standard multifamily structure, you know, there's typically a higher turnover. In the single-family detached multifamily product, the build-to-rent, you know, where you've got a single-family structure on a multifamily parcel, those are going to have a higher retention rate as well versus your standard multifamily, just due to the product type. So, we, there are certain things that we do know from a demographic standpoint and the rents that various products necessitate.
Our council, other questions? I don't want to keep going all night on this. I think we've got some good information. I know we've got a couple of things that maybe we want to put in, in a motion. So, any other items we want to modify on this, and I think we've got a volunteer for a motion, he might jot down a couple of things.
And before, before you rock and roll here, for the 20-foot minimum separation, I would recommend that be for, you know, only multifamily product, and that would include build-to-rent. Because if you enforce that, you're not going to get that Main Street development that Keith was just showing you because if, depending on the definition of structure. So, that would be a zero-foot setback between those structures. So, if you do want to enforce that 20-foot minimum separation, I'd recommend it be for multifamily or a single-family residential.
For our various single-family zoning ordinances, we have three. What is the separation? Do you know that?
They typically have sideyards associated with each of the districts. We don't typically see a smaller sideyard than five feet so that, you know, you're main, you're always maintaining that 10 feet between structures at least. So, single-family one, two, and three, he says, are seven and a half. So, then that gives you a total of 15 between structures. So then, that gives you a total of 15 between structures.
So, I'm wondering if 20 would be too strict, would that?
20's a lot.
I mean, I think that would inhibit some interest.
Do you mean like 15 might be better than 20, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Because that's even, even the 15, well, I guess you count the side yard, but in-between houses.
Yeah.
I don't know how many feet is in-between my house and my next-door neighbor, but it's not very many. You know, so, I don't think most of our residential zoning requires much separation between homes. And I wouldn't want that to be a drawback.
And using a standard like that, that you're already familiar with, is a great practice, other than a random numbers, we were talking about with rates earlier. But, so if we were already, you know, having that minimum separation?
Maybe we could say no less than 10 feet, or?
That's, that's already required for the fire code.
Yeah, okay.
So, is it, is it, what is, is it seven feet?
Minimum seven and a half side yard, and so when you have two structures, that would equal 15 feet.
So, it'd be 15 feet.
And then we've also got.
Paul, you think 15, huh?
And Paul, we've also got the, well, it's not going, but the park, the public amenity requirement and the buffer requirement, too.
Any other questions, comments, council, before we let Amber go? And I appreciate you staying late, Amber.
No problem, happy to be here.
I guess no other questions, thank you ma'am, appreciate it. Are any other questions, comments? I will entertain a motion.
Okay. I will make a motion to adopt the new multi, or mixed-use zoning district ordinance number 2022-11 with the following changes. Increase the separation to 15 feet for residential and multifamily, and change the public maintenance building storage yard and the accessory buildings to special use permit.
Next second? Ladies and gentlemen, cast your votes. Excellent, thank you. Yes, thank you, Amber, thank you, staff.
I'll provide a timeline, if you're interested in moving forward with the property-specific ones. And Gabe, can you disagree that?
I think we definitely are, thank you ma'am, appreciate it. Item number 13, considers an action regarding appointment of animal shelter advisory committee, Assistant Manager Lee Howe.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This item is regarding to a recommendation of an appointment to the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee of Mr. Joseph Stout. You're, most of you are familiar with Mr. Stout. He was present during the community cat discussion a few weeks ago, and he took the lectern and made some comments, and also answered some questions. Mr. Stout would be the perfect person to occupy the animal welfare organization requirement and one of the required state mandated positions. All we need to do is re-designate Animals Control Officer Brianna Farley to, to one of the positions that's designated as involved in shelter operations. Then it will be filled with all four mandated positions, and the committee can meet legally on September the 14th.
Any questions from the assistant city manager?
I only get one. So, the other three positions we have there, can we immediately advertise those and start getting people to?
Yes, there's a standing.
Just ask them to fill out the application?
Right, there's a standing application form on the website that's always up. We have tried to do some active recruiting on some people, and without, with the exception of Mr. Stout, not much luck. But if you have anybody in mind, or we come up with somebody else that we can recommend that's willing to volunteer, they can be appointed.
I think we should shake the tree.
Is this something that we can publicize on our Facebook, Facebook groups and things? You know, we always seem to have problems trying to get people to, or at least this last year, get enough people. This Tammy, I don't know, Southard? I thought, when we looked over this, I thought she met those qualifications for those four professional.
Yeah.
Positions.
We did reach out, and we were told that she did. So evidently, there was a misunderstanding or something.
Can you clarify that?
Yeah, I, Tammy Southard, we checked with her, and she said that she did not qualify. But I can check with her again, if you have different information.
I mean.
I think we move forward here with this, that's my personal.
I mean, we still need to fill in those empty holes, but.
Well, we've got enough on this to meet, right? On this, on this list, at least they can have regular meetings and continue.
Sure, and it's fine to have two people on that qualification, it would be unusual, but.
And, you know, we also have a requirement, we meet four times a year. And the last time I saw, looking on the website, their last agenda was for March. And that meeting, oh, he's gone, that meeting was canceled because they did not meet quorum. So, I mean, we need to get these people up and running, get these meetings going again. Do we also publicize those meetings?
They have in the past been posted on our website. And I understand that Council's desire to have the agendas posted prior to those meetings as well. So, we'll, we'll make sure to get that done.
Agendas, minutes, attendance, and any budget, if that's part of what they do.
All right, any other questions, council?
As well as the schedule of meetings.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
Hold on, what was the gentleman's name?
Joseph Stout.
Mayor, I move that we appoint Joseph Staff to the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee.
All right, cast your votes.
He's on this, he put his other end.
Keith's asleep at the wheel. Wow, he.
Motion passes, thank you, Lee, appreciate getting that going. All right, 14 is done, executive position is currently not required. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All those who favor raise your right hand, 9:17, we're out of here, thank y'all.
That wasn't as late as I thought it was going to be. It's not as late as I thought it was going to be, 9:15? I thought for sure.